All of you, thank you for joining us for this city council meeting and workshop on March 26. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Approve the minutes of regular meeting of March 19, 2024.
Are there any items to be pulled from that meeting minutes? Or corrections? I see none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, I guess no opening roll, just a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items one through 14.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? I have item number seven. And item, yeah, just item number seven. Any council members? I see none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without item number seven?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Sorry, out of habit. Please voice your vote.
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes seven zero. Mosh, item number seven is regarding the Stop Violence Against Women Act grant. Just wanted to get further clarification about this item. Specifically, that this is coming out of the Wichita Police Department's budget and the importance of this grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure we have somebody from the police department here. The total cost of the project, of the position that is funded from the grant is $87,000. It would, actually, it would continue to fund a position that was created a few years ago for coming alongside victims of domestic violence and helping them as we're going through the investigative process as well as the court process and make sure that they receive all the support services that are necessary for them to be able to get through the traumatic event. And the victim, it's a special victim assistant is what we call the position.
And this is a matching grant, is that correct?
It is. It's a 75-25, so the city's share is about $22,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion regarding item number seven? I see none. Do I have a motion to approve item number seven?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated March 25, 2024.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened March 25, 2024 for the following. For engineering, we have the paving of Harrington, Mount Vernon, Lanera to serve Willow Creek East Third Edition. For Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas Paving, in the amount of $290,424. For purchasing, we have the 25,000 gross vehicle weight cabin chassis with contractor body and bulkhead. For Omaha Truck Center, DBA Truck Center Companies, for an aggregate bid total of $104,306. We have the asphalt hot and cold mix for Pearson Materials LLC, Group One, in the amount of $224,400. And Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas Paving, Group Two, in the amount of $348,000. We have the Lincoln Street Dam Cylinders Replacement for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated, in the amount of $62,000. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are open requests and proposals out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. I recommend your approval.
Any questions for staff?
I just have one question. Can you go back once? One more. Yeah, so does this mean that you guys only got one bid?
We didn't put it out, and the reason that we did not competitively bid this was my understanding is that the actual dam installation, there was special equipment that Don Linger had to construct and fabricate. I didn't know if someone from engineering could speak to the item.
I'm just kind of curious because sometimes people do comment that we don't get multiple bids or whatever. So yeah, if someone could explain it, that'd be great. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Ballard, I will have to get back with you on that. I do not know that answer, but I will follow up with you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Not criticizing either, just an opportunity to learn.
Okay, I will find out.
Appreciate it.
I'd be happy if we want to make a motion to defer this specific item until we get your answers, or we could pass it and get you information. But my understanding when presented by the department is that the construction of the actual dam required the vendor to make specific equipment, and that was why it was approved as a sole source.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I don't want to stall the project. I just am curious, so thank you. I appreciate that, though.
We'll get you information.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Mayor Wu to attend the City Leaders Academy in Manhattan, Kansas, April 12 through the 13, 2024.
I move to approve the travel.
Second. I see a motion and a second. Those who would like to say aye to pass this, please say aye. I will abstain from it.
Aye.
All those, if you're opposed, say nay, nay, or abstain, sorry. So motion passes six zero with one abstention. No, so this is, so the question was from Vice Mayor Ballard regarding the City Leaders Academy. So the City Leaders Academy is for new elected leaders to learn in Manhattan, Kansas, put on by the League of Kansas Municipalities. As a new council member/mayor, I am attending that conference in addition to speaking at that event. For clarification. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Mayor Wu to attend the 2024 Delegation of U.S. Women Mayors in Zurich, Switzerland, April 20 through the 27, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Before that, I will read a little portion of what this is all about. First and foremost, this is an item that will not be paid for by the City of Wichita. All expenses will be paid by the U.S. Embassy of Switzerland. This is a 2024 delegation of U.S. Women Mayors to Switzerland. This was by special invitation only. There are only nine women mayors that were selected for this program. The mayors include the mayor of Columbia, Missouri, Tampa, Florida, McMinnville, Oregon, Thornton, Colorado, St. Louis Park, Minnesota, Albany, New York, Fontana, California, Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, and Wichita, Kansas. I am very honored to have been selected as a woman mayor, the first woman to serve in this position during a full four-year elected term. And so I'm very honored again to have been selected for this trip to Switzerland. This is an opportunity for me and eight women mayors of the United States to collaborate, learn about safety, economic development, as well as topics that would benefit Wichita in terms of collaboration between the United States and Switzerland. While I am there, I will also take a meeting with Select USA, which is part of the U.S. Department of Commerce, and I will advocate for Wichita companies while I am in Switzerland. Again, one more time, this is not being paid for by the City of Wichita, nor any stipend by the City of Wichita. This is, this is an item on the agenda for full transparency, awareness, and approval. I move to approve.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Will you be bringing back chocolate? I hear they have good chocolate.
I shall bring back chocolate for you. Motion and a second. Again, I will abstain from this vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Mayor Wu to attend the Kansas League of Municipalities meeting in Topeka, Kansas, on April 5, 2024.
Another part of this item, I am one of the board members for the Kansas League of Municipalities. As the largest city in the state of Kansas, we have a seat on that board that has not been fully sat on. And so one of my duties will be to be a board member, an active board member, on the Kansas League of Municipalities. And I will take a City of Wichita vehicle to this meeting on April 5 and come back that day. I move to approve your travel.
Second.
Motion and a second. I will again abstain from this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
I think we have multiple. Shall we go District 1 through 6? Okay.
I don't have any appointments.
District 2, no, okay. District 3.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Mimi Ibarra and Paul Davis to the District 3 Advisory Board.
District 4?
No appointments.
District 5? And District 6.
I'd like to appoint Victoria Caro for the Wichita Airport.
Okay. And I would like to appoint Dalton Glasscock to the Downtown Wichita at-large seat. I will also nominate names submitted by Downtown Wichita for the SMID Advisory Board. They include Joe Johnson, Natalie Gosh, Chad Hansen, A.J. Beleski, Deborah Frazier, Joe Sermeyer, Mark Schmelzli, Joel Kelly, and Don Sherman. Do I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item. Okay, it is now time for workshop, which means City Manager Bob Leighton will now take over.
We will not be adjourning because we'll have an executive session.
I'm sorry, my fault. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We have three items today, all of importance. And the first one has to do with a request the council made for us to come back and provide background information regarding the pickleball complex that is proposed for South Lakes Park. The council was forced to reject the bids that were received for this project, and before going back out, you had asked for more information. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Troy Hauptman for an overview of the project.
Thank you, Bob. Good morning. Mayor and Council, Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. And the item, again, is in regards to pickleball. So I have some all-star folks here that traveled some distance to be here. And I have, one of our consultants is actually virtual, and they each have a really important part to share with us today. So I'm going to, here's a table of contents. We have a lot of information. We're going to try to be detailed and brief to make sure we get you guys the facts, but also be very quick about it as well. So I'm going to provide a little bit of background. Susie Santo, she's here from Visit Wichita to talk a little bit about some items from the perspective of Wichita. And the site study, Michelle Perry, she's virtual. She's going to provide some information. USA Pickleball is actually present. Carl Schmidt, he is here. He traveled here to be here for this day. There's, we have, I'll talk a little bit about the sound study. I'm going to go over that. And the last portion of this is the design. PEC is here. Nick Stibe is here. He'll go over that portion of it. So a lot to cover, but I think we'll be pretty brief. This is a picture over at Riverside. These are some new courts that were provided by Mo Conley. There was actually a grant that helped us build this. And actually, I'm sorry, this wasn't Mo Conley's grant. There was another grant that came from the Latner Foundation. So a little bit more background about the site. This is actually South Lakes, and it's a really interesting park that we have a lot of space here. We have some softball, and what we have here is remnants of all of our soccer fields. This used to be a location where we had a lot of soccer, and that soccer moved up to Striker. These fields are still being used, and we use them for football and some other activities and some adult soccer. But we do have tons of space left over, and this is one of the reasons why we wanted to look at this spot as a location for pickleball and other type of activities that we could do here. I'm going to come back to this a little bit later. This is a timeline of when we came to council. These are all touch points from council at one form or another, and design council. I'm going to come back to this and go over this a little bit more. But if you noticed, March 10 of 2021 was when this first started. And this is the portion where council was part of this. We've actually been looking at this project for about five years and been working with a lot of folks locally and nationally in regards to this project. A little bit about the budget. So the budget came out to be $6.15 million, and it was actually initiated in April of 2023. So far, we've already spent about $350,000 on design and the sound study and some other costs as well. We had to increase the cost a little bit because we wanted to actually have a world-class quality pickleball complex for hosting tournaments, which we'll talk a little bit more about. The budget includes the design, includes utilities, earthwork, and we have a special standard in regards to the courts, that they're all post-tension, which means that there's steel that goes through the courts and actually tensions the courts together so they don't crack concrete paths and the actual building, as well as all the F, F, and E, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. Oops. There we go. Just for your reference, and we'll talk more about the actual site plan. This is what it looks like, and we'll talk a little bit more about the actual design of everything that's in here. But a couple of things, I wanted to give you guys a look at this and also a look at the map so you can keep that in your mind as we go through some of the other items. So I'm going to turn it over to Susie. She has a lot of information to share about the local perspective of this project.
Thank you, Troy. Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. Susie Santo, President and CEO of Visit Wichita. And Troy asked me to share a little bit of the background on how we got to that March 10, 2021 date. So I'm going to give a little bit of the background and how we got involved and where we netted out with the pickleball recommendation. You know, initially, the manager and I chatted, and the manager asked, really, there had been some potential maybe interest in baseball out at South Lakes and when soccer moved out to Striker, and as Troy mentioned, there's open fields. Does baseball make a lot of sense out there? And as we were chatting, we're like, you know, let's take kind of a broad approach to this without any preconceived ideas and say, what is best for Wichita at that facility? And so at that point, Visit Wichita, we hired BCW Sports, and you're going to hear from Michelle in just a moment. We hired Michelle Perry and Dale Newberger. And I have to tell you, they are like incredibly well-respected in this field. Together, they have, I don't even, Michelle can tell you, maybe five decades of involvement in sports. And so they've helped a lot of cities figure out their sports strategy, facility needs, et cetera. So went to Michelle and Dale, and we said, listen, we have this property, South Lakes. We wanted to start, it was important for all of us, again, a blank canvas, you know, no preconceived ideas. What makes most sense for Wichita to come into this space? And it was really important when we talked to Michelle and Dale that they really stressed a few things. We're looking for the best outcome for the city, not at the detriment, not at the detriment of any other facility. We didn't want to displace and move to another facility. Wanted to grow the pie of whatever was going out there from other sports. Needed to be thoughtful, deliberate, no negative outcome for the community. So we really, that's where we started this process. And at beginning, she started down the path of baseball and asking questions about baseball. Does it make sense out there to add more facilities? And Michelle is going to chat a little bit more about that. But after talking to the stakeholders, for numerous reasons, really did not find that that was going to be the best course of action with the most opportunity. So at that point, shifted gears. What else makes sense out there? And it was really then that pickleball rose to the, rose to the top and really bubbled up. And it was different conversations with the stakeholders about pickleball. The stakeholders were very enthusiastic. They emphasized that it was a significant opportunity to grow the pie, greater capacity. The pickleball needs were not being met by the current capacity, and again, wanting to grow the pie. The pickleball leaders and advocates had already started engaging in conversation with 259 about including it in PE and really learning to, or really wanting to grow the pickleball enthusiasts from a young age. And what was fun to learn in the project, which I didn't know back then, is that Wichita has a lot of pro pickleball players and highly ranked, not only in the U.S. but in the world. Who knew? We are the air capital of aviation, but also pickleball right here in Wichita. So that really, again, a lot of advocates. And then we had both tennis centers, Riverside and Edgemore, that had courts, but they were interested and could collaborate on those larger events. So pickleball, after lots of discussions, really became a focus. And what Michelle and Dale really hit home is that when you're looking at a facility, there's three clientele that you need to attract. So we looked at South Lakes, very important first, individuals who live near and around the park. Are they going to be, you know, able to utilize this facility? And again, that checked the box, yes. Well, individuals throughout Wichita travel to South Lakes and participate in that sport, and that checked the box. And then finally, the third clientele that we wanted to make sure that would be attracted was an audience that would come for special events or tournaments, all that good stuff, that would travel throughout the region and out the country, that would come here whether to, whether it's to play in it, as a participant or a spectator. And that checked the box. So all of a sudden, the stakeholders, they were enthusiastic about it. It made a lot of sense. And again, Michelle and Carl will talk more about pickleball. They talked about that growing sport. It attracted the clientele. We felt like we could drive that economic impact. And then finally, when you looked at this project, there was opportunity from the city perspective to really own the programmatic aspects of it. So from the, from that sector, but there was also the opportunity on the private sector for whether it be a restaurant or managing the pro shop or a banquet space if it were out there. So it looked, again, like a great opportunity for both sectors. So at the end of the day, that's really where pickleball rose and their research came. And that's when the recommendation came back to the manager about, after all of that research, we think it's prime spot to bring all these courts in and be a hub of pickleball in Wichita. And just to paint a little color on sports in Wichita and to kind of put in perspective, Visit Wichita this year, we've got about eight events. I just looked at eight events that we're hosting over the next several months. We started with synchronized skating at Interest Bank Arena in January. We just finished hosting the NCAA Division II Men's Wrestling Championships at Hartman. We also hosted the NAIA Championship Men Wrestling at Hartman. Coming up at Striker this summer, we've got USU Soccer, the President's Cup. We're also hosting a lacrosse event out there. We've got pro softball coming to WSU. I say that, we have a track record of when we have the facilities, we can drive the sporting events and that economic impact. So those eight events that I just talked about, this year alone, and Josh Howell, who's sitting behind with the vest on, who's our sports, our VP of Sports Development, he'll be here to answer any questions as well. But I say that because those eight events in direct impact, economic impact, direct spending into the community are about $12 million. And that's the course of these, you know, eight events over this few months of this year. Troy and Josh have had conversations with just two organizations over the last six, eight months when pickleball was moving along. And it hasn't, there hasn't been a shovel in the ground, and just two events over a 12-month period were interested. And we were going down that path of the RFP and looking at it. And those conservatively were $2 million in direct spending into the community. And that's two events, two conversations. So we believe we have a track record. When there's facilities, we can get them here. Those are dollars in the pockets, and that benefit all of Wichita. So that's just a little bit of history of how it came to be a pickleball. Came back in March of 21, and the work that had been done to get to this point. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Perry again. Just, I can't say enough about her and Dale and their reputation in this industry. And so really, we're fortunate that we picked up the phone and called them, that they were willing to hop in and help us on this project. So I think she's on Zoom, maybe Troy?
Yes.
Or I'll turn it over to you and your introducer. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Susie. And Visit Wichita has been a huge impact on many, many different opportunities for us, but been a great partner in regards to pickleball. And really quick, before we go into Michelle, I just want to talk a little bit about, a little bit of history. When you talk about pickleball, there's a person by the name of Becky Middleton. Unfortunately, she passed away last year. She has been a, in the past, a driving force in regards to pickleball. She would come to my office weekly, sometimes daily, pitching her ideas, really kind of getting the ball rolling for pickleball. And she was a huge part in regards to this idea. She was very integral in talking to the pickleball community locally about this facility and how it would really kind of fit the need of what needs to happen here in Wichita for pickleball. Pickleball folks, they like to gather. They like to play in large groups. And so two, three courts around the city was not going to suffice for them. They were actually wanting a spot that actually had 12, 18, 24 courts. So I just wanted to mention Becky Middleton because she is a huge part of all the efforts that have moved forward. And there's several of the pickleball folks behind us, and they're all shaking their head. So I would like to introduce Michelle Perry. She was a consultant that helped us with this. I'm going to go through the slides when she tells me to move the slides, but you'll hear her voice. And at the end, if I can figure this out, I'll have her picture up so she can talk to you face to face. Michelle, are you, are you present?
I am. Troy, good morning.
Good morning. It's all yours.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Susie, for the kind words. And it's great to be with you this morning. Troy, you can go ahead and switch to the next slide there. You know, when we started this project, Dale and I, we, one of the very first questions we asked was, what is the definition of success? And it was very clear, again, as we talked about South Lakes, there were six things that were important. One was this, whatever this was, whatever decision was made, it needed to serve the community, particularly the neighborhood, in closest proximity to, to the park. community, particularly the neighborhood, in closest proximity to, to the park. It needed to be able to generate visitor spending. And Susie talked about that a little bit. It needed to be a valuable asset that could motivate participation and fitness and wellness across the community. It needed to provide a different asset, something that differentiated this, this footprint from other, not only from other facilities within the city of Wichita, but really across the region. We'll talk about that a little bit later. It needed to understand and take into account sports programming and sports tourism, what was happening in, in the sports tourism world. And it, and it needed to operate in a fiscally responsible way. So that was, those were the key success metrics. And I'm going to, I'm going to try and tie some of these comments back to those six principles here as we, as we talk about the work. So Troy, you can go ahead and switch. So, so those, those success metrics really set the tone for our, for our workflow. And as, as Susie said at the beginning of this, we, we really went into this project with no preconceived outcomes. The, ultimately, the decision on, on how to best utilize the footprint needed to be one that helped grow the pie. And you heard Susie use those words earlier. It, it was really important that whatever decision was made, it didn't just redistribute the participants to another part of the city. And we saw that very clearly with what happened with the soccer clubs that were, that were utilizing South Lakes. They, they moved to, they moved to Stryker. And, and again, there was, there was not growth in that. There was simply redistributing that. So it was important, again, that, that we keep that in mind, that, that we wanted this to be a net positive for the community. We also were, were really careful to make sure that we, we emphasized that the plan, the utilization plan was responsive to unmet capacity and that avoided duplication of services. So again, we didn't want to just create the same thing that was in another part of, of the community. And we wanted to make sure that there was, that there was demand for, again, for whatever facility ended up being built at, at South Lakes. So we started talking with numerous baseball stakeholders in, about South Lakes, from all walks of life, from folks that owned facilities to folks that have been involved in the baseball culture of Wichita their entire lives. And, and what we learned following those conversations was that Wichita really wasn't exceeding its baseball capacity, that the, the current baseball complexes and baseball facilities, they weren't, they weren't operating at max capacity. So adding more baseball assets wasn't really going to achieve the, the outcomes that we talked about at the beginning of this. So we, we pumped the brakes on those conversations and we started to look at demographic information and growing sports trends to really identify some opportunities for Wichita to differentiate itself against some of the markets that Susie and Josh compete against on a daily basis for important events. And we also spent time looking at what those competitor cities were doing in, in terms of sports facilities. We didn't, again, we didn't want to suggest or go down the path of, of building a facility where our competition had a similar or better facility that would, would cause us undue competition. And, and so, again, as we continued these conversations and we continued to, to, to look at this, at that time, and I know Carl is still going to talk about the explosive nature and growth of, of pickleball, this was, this was the sport, again, that was trending upward, that participation was growing faster than demand, that, and so we started to, to begin to identify some groups to talk to about pickleball. And so we talked with, with dozens and dozens of, of individuals with varying experiences. And after those conversations, we, we were even more convinced that pickleball was the right fit for, for Wichita. And as Susie stated, one of the things, again, that was interesting to us that we learned were, was the, the elite nature of players that were, that were currently living in Wichita. Some of the top players in the country and even in the world lived and competed in Wichita. And what we heard were that, was that people were traveling from around the region and really from around the country to get a high-level experience against elite competition. So people were coming, they were already coming to Wichita to seek out these, these elite and, and highly ranked pickleball players. And again, as Troy stated, what we learned was, there is a robust, enthusiastic, well-connected and organized pickleball community in, in Wichita. In fact, I still, to this day, am part of the Wichita Pickleball Facebook group. So I know that they are, again, well-connected and, and very enthusiastic about the sport. What we also learned was that there was unmet demand from the community. So there was more demand for courts than what Wichita had currently within its, its portfolio. So again, that, that demand was, was very high and continuing to grow. The other thing that we, we learned in talking with, with many of the pickleball folks that we talked to was this idea of growing the game. And there was a, and again, as we all measure our lives, this was pre-COVID. There were, there was a real push to introduce pickleball into the curriculum with School 259. There were, there were a group of pickleball enthusiasts that had begun to teach local PE teachers about the game so that it could be introduced in PE classes. And they had also begun to have preliminary conversations with Kesha about making it a high school sport, again, so that they could introduce young people and families about the sport of pickleball with the idea of driving increased utilization of the courts during times when there weren't lessons or, or competition happening on those courts. So again, keeping in mind this idea of utilization. And so we, again, what we found was that there was significant and enthusiastic support for pickleball in Wichita. And as we looked at pickleball facilities around the country that had begun to pop up, we, we talked a lot about those facilities with the local pickleball community, many of which travel every weekend. They travel either regionally or nationally to play in these pickleball tournaments. And they, they shared that the, that the demand is, is very high, that the competition is very intense, that you, these pickleball tournaments fill up in a matter of hours. So the competition for getting into these fields is, again, very, very high. And so again, as we talked about their experiences and what they would like to see or what, what, what made them describe a facility in a positive way. They talked about the facility needing to be large enough to hold multi-day events. They, there needed to be amenities, food, electricity, restrooms, locker rooms. Again, there, there's such competition for those players and, or their dollars that much of their decision-making is where, where can they go and have a better player experience? So amenities were really important to them. It was interesting, as we saw, again, at that time, some of the facilities that had recently come online, there was a, a new facility in Florida that had been built and that had hosted several major tournaments. But the, again, the feedback that we got from players was, it was in the middle of a field, there was really no infrastructure. And at the time, all they had for facilities were porta-potties. So again, that was, again, this reinforcement of making sure that there was infrastructure in place to be able to provide a great player experience. So again, as we, as Troy has worked through and as he has shared the, the site plan, we think that what's, what's been proposed would position Wichita very well to host significant, not just local events, but regional and national tournaments. And they could do this while providing opportunities for the community to really engage in a lifelong sport that contributes to health and fitness. Again, all tying back to those key principles that we talked about at the beginning. You know, the, the other thing, and Susie touched on this, that these courts would really give them more assets to sell. And I think, I think she's, she's shared the, the recent success of Visit Wichita in bringing important sporting events to, to the community. But certainly, having new tools in their toolbox would, would help them drive, again, increased tourism, sports tourism to Wichita, again, which is one of those, those key metrics that were identified at the beginning of this. And then finally, I would say that this investment will result in a substantial upgrade to the existing amenities currently at South Lakes. So again, that, that improvement and that investment in, in the city asset that, that elevates the, the community there at South Lakes. And then, as we've, we talked about several times, both Susie and, and then in my earlier comments, this expansion would bring visitors from, not only from Wichita, but, but throughout the region and nationally. And this new money will come to the area and it's likely that, along with those new revenue streams, that there would, it would be assumed that there would be some additional economic development as a result of this project, some new small businesses that might emerge in this neighborhood because of these, the increased traffic and the increased attention on, on the pickleball courts and, and South Lakes in general. And so I would say that we continue to support the, the great work of Troy and Susie and Josh to, to really elevate the event profile of Wichita. And, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to be with you today. And I, I'm happy to answer questions at the end, but, but for now, I'll turn it back to Troy.
Thank you, Michelle. I really appreciate your involvement with this project. And just to get to the next slide, Mr. Schmidt from USA Pickleball, Carl, has some information for you all.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to share this update with the mayor and city council. In the four decades that I've been in the workforce, I've had as many careers. I was a systems engineer to begin with during pickle, or during racquetball and tennis's boom back in the 70s, late 70s and 80s. I was a teaching pro and, and club GM during that period. Following that, I was in tech for over two and a half decades. During those, those careers, I experienced five booms. The first, of course, was the tennis and racquetball boom in the, in the 80s. That resulted in a huge infrastructure build-out in both sports. In tech, during the 90s, I was right in the middle, I was working with Intel, I was right in the middle of the PC boom in the early 90s. And then in the late 90s, the explosion in internet service providers, and I was involved in, in both of those programs. Moving into the next decade, the launch of mobile computing, and then toward the end of that decade, smartphones were, were exploding. I was based up in, in Finland, supporting one of the largest manufacturers of phones. Those booms were nothing like this one. And so it's, it's been very exciting to be part of this. Over the last 10 years, I was involved as an ambassador as far back as 2015. I got involved in a number of different aspects of the sport, the first attempt at a rating system, the first go at a pro tour, first, you know, live media platform as well. And this, this sport is demonstrating it's got legs. And so I'll go over some numbers with you. As of this last report from the Sports and Fitness Industry Association, pickleball remains the fastest-growing sport for the third year in a row as a result of that, that study. Just in terms of numbers, participation doubled in '22. We increased over 50% year-on-year last year as a result of that, that last report. And then, just in terms of sustained growth over the last four years, almost 250% growth during that period. The, the number today, as, as reported by the Sports and Fitness Industry Association, is about 13.6 million. There is another study that's referred to frequently. It's, it's by YouGov. They report a number in the mid-30s, about 36 million. We tend to, to report the more modest of the two for a number of reasons. Probably one of the most important takeaways from this most recent report, though, is that not only the largest demographic, but the fastest-growing demographic is the 25 to 34. And the lifeblood of any sports growth, of course, is its youth. This sport, of course, has been graywashed to some extent. It's, it's felt that it's a sport for older people, that, that older people play. It, it truly is. But this figure right here in terms of the, this demographic being the fastest-growing sector is very exciting for us. And it's, it's really driving a lot of our programming here recently as well. From a facility standpoint, there was a reference earlier about the, the demand far exceeding the supply. Just to put some numbers to it, we've got, we track about 12,000 known locations in the U.S. It results in about 52,000 courts in North America. We're seeing about 130 new locations added each month. The downside of this is that 70% of these are temporary. They're taped out in many cases. It could be, you know, chalked out in a cul-de-sac or shared courts, dual stripes, for example, tennis courts with, with pickleball courts on them. Estimates from a recent report were that in order to meet existing and forecast demand, about 25,000 courts need to be built over the next couple of years. That's a spend of close to $900 million from an infrastructure standpoint. USA Pickleball is currently engaged with about $300 million in projects. There's some very large-scale multi-sport projects which result in, you know, seven-digit type projects. But we're, we're touching quite a few programs across the U.S. today. We launched this facility development function at the beginning of '22. It was more to address a lot of iterative questions that would come in. But the result of, after launching that, we see about 10 to 15 new projects a week. Some of them are conversions, some of them are greenfield build-outs as well. In some cases, they're dreamers, you know, people that are kicking tires, looking to spend some of their, their retirement on a, their own facility. In other cases, they're large-scale facilities like the one we're talking about today. Part of this growth, of course, you know, many, many municipalities have taken an approach to convert existing resources, those that might be underused. It might be a basketball court. It might be a two-tennis-court installation in a pocket park or a community park. The result of, of many of these installations is that, that the community around it, residents around it, may have an issue with the sound. So to address that, we do, by the way, believe that's a fairly small percentage of the population or of the, the number of facilities out there, but it gets a lot of attention in the media. And so to address that, we launched a research project about 18 months ago. As of last year, we launched a new program. It's a quiet category, so there's paddles being produced today that reduce the noise by about 50%. And then I actually shared with, with Troy and the team upstairs here, he got a sneak peek at a new quiet ball that's in development. And we'll be having a couple of pilot projects. I'll be headed to Southern Cal here after this meeting to do some tests there and get some focus group feedback. So there's, there's quite a bit of development in that area. We're quite, quite pleased with the progress there. In terms of, of how this demand's being, being served, we're seeing quite a few new business models, old-school private club-type approaches, so membership-only, mixed member and drop-in. member and drop in, we're seeing quite a bit more of that. The entertainment model, I think, actually originated here with Chicken and Pickle. And of course, that, that project took off quite substantially. Today, I'm engaged with probably no less than 30 of those type of facilities. Most of those are in the northern states, by the way, because they're, they're indoors. What we're also seeing, by the way, the, a lot of the, the new projects that are coming up do have aspirations to host tournaments. Tournaments can be a huge revenue driver. It's a great way to highlight the facility and showcase the facility as well in terms of driving the economic impact. That's been addressed quite a bit, but I've got a few more numbers to add to that here in a few minutes. But the capacity planning is very important. What I've seen in the, the, the project here locally is an attention to detail in terms of how do you address these crowds, vendors, officials, is there enough room for officials, operations? All of that's, that type of planning is, is going into this overall plan, which is very encouraging. And then one of the things to think about as well is in between these events, how do you program for, for social? The, the setup for a facility is very important in terms of where do people congregate? Are there covers, shades? Is there room for, you know, potlucks or barbecues, that type of thing? Paying attention to that's very important because the sport does have a, a heavy social angle, so planning for that in the, the actual physical plan of the facility is very important. As I mentioned before, in launching this facility development function, we provide a number of, of services and support for the design. We've got a few architects on retainer. Material recommendations, we want to make sure that the best materials are, are used, but all the way down to planning colors. Color choices are very important for optics and contrast. We do provide support for acoustic assessments. Troy will touch on that already. There's been, you know, quite a bit of attention paid to that already in this project. Some of the other things that we do, we, we're very hard to promote facilities. Once the ribbon's been cut, we have a Places to Play platform where travelers may look up, you know, facilities they're moving through town. We're going to evolve that platform as well to do even greater features on special facilities that have features or they're, they're large scale and they do host a lot of events. Another thing that we do is we work hard to connect to local ambassadors. There's clearly a lot of work being done already with the USA Pickleball ambassadors here locally. And then, as I mentioned before, after the ribbon's cut, we provide programming leagues. We've got teaching platforms that we're working with, the PPR, which is a close relative of the PTR, the Professional Tennis Registry. That's been, been a very successful platform for us. Looking at this locally, and by the way, just from a project standpoint, before I came, I took a look at my, my inbox. I don't file anything away and I have, I have email exchanges with Josh and with Troy and with PEC from over 18 months ago. So we've been involved with this project for quite some time and that's why I felt this was absolutely worth, worth the time to come out and, and meet with you. These estimates that I'd mentioned before in terms of the number of participants in the sport, if you do the math on this relative to the U.S. population, it's anywhere from 4% with the SFIA estimate, all the way up to 11% of the U.S. population are participating in this sport. That's a mix of what they call core, and that means we play often, or casual, it's at least once a month. So this, this analysis that I did, this demographic shows that within about a 30-minute drive time, you've got a potential, a total available market of anywhere between 22,000 and 60,000 participants. Clearly, there's a, a large market here just in the Wichita metro area. But when you start talking major events, which a lot of the focus has been on that, players will drive for this. So I've got three hours here and that takes into account several other metropolitan areas and it gets us up north of 6 million in that, that demographic. If we only look at the core participant percentage, which a little bit north of 30%, that's about 88,000 participants that would drive here to participate in a, a large scale event. This could be a, a three-day event or a four-day event over the weekend, but they will travel if they know they're going to get a, you know, experience a, a nice event. That's, you know, there's an attention to detail, it's, you know, well served from a food standpoint, and it's run professionally as well. And there's a, there's a considerable focus on ensuring that players do get a, a great experience when they travel for tournaments. And I think that's been one of the key drivers behind growth just in that, that sector. An important point when you're talking economic impact, when you look at a, a tournament competitor, the factor in terms of the support group, family, other people that are there on behalf of that participant is about 2.5. A facility like this one, a 24-court facility, could easily host 1,000 participants over a four-day event. And of course, that means about 2,500 people there for that event. And that's a lot of heads in beds, a lot of petrol purchased, a lot of meals bought. And so we do, we do some lightweight economic impact studies for facilities. I've not shared those numbers before with, with Troy or the team, but there's some, some real numbers here in this area. And something I, I wanted to drive home here was this facility would be one of the largest in the country north of the 35th parallel. So there's a colleague back there, Ron Ponder, I see him very frequently at large events. These are the, the pro level events. He's an official and director. The, most of the large facilities that, that we frequent are in Florida or in Texas, Arizona, and to some extent in California. This would be one of the largest in the U.S. above the 35th parallel. And then in this area, through the Midwest, it would, it would be probably the center of gravity for many large tournaments, regional level tournaments, but even pro level tournaments. So given the, the plan that was most recently presented, this could scale with a championship court that could seat several hundred people during a major event. These events attract anywhere between 1,000 to 1,200 participants. They get great visibility. They're generally carried on ESPN, Fox Sports and some of the others as well. So this would put you at kind of the center of the pickleball universe here in this, in this region. I get asked this question very frequently, is this, is this another fad? I highlighted something here and I, I've got the, this entire report too, if you're interested in looking at some of the other trends in, in sports that typical, typically fall within the Parks and Rec directive. In this case, UC tennis and, and pickleball are included in this. But the key figures here, if you look at the, the five-year average annual growth, well over 33%, so in this case, 35, 36 and 37% in, in every category. So not just casual, but also core, the number of people that are playing frequently continues to increase at a significant percentage relative to other racket and paddle sports. This is, I, I think to me, one of the key underpinning bits of data that show that the sport isn't just a COVID bump. It, it has so much going for it just in terms of, of its impact to physiology, the social impact I'll talk about here in a moment. Ease of access, the socio-economic access piece of this is very important. It can be played outside. It is played inside quite a bit as well. Of course, you know, indoor facilities do cost quite a bit. So we've grown primarily outdoors, but there's still about, there's about 40% of the courts are indoors and most of those are gymnasiums that have been taped out for and are temporary use. But this is a, a key figure here in terms of steady, steady growth here over the last several years. It's very sustainable. And again, having been part of several booms and in some cases busts over the last several decades, this one I see has some significant legs. This last piece I wanted to share with you, there was an article just last month in Pickleball Magazine. Our Surgeon General was featured in it and oddly, he wasn't talking about what I mentioned before. Pickleball is, is one of the few sports that delivers what I would say a trifecta of, of health. The frequency of play, so most players play several times a week. The duration of play, anywhere from two to three hours when they play, and the intensity of play. It's somewhere in a medium intensity or for top level players, it's high intensity as well. Has a profound effect on a person's physiology. For those of us north of a certain age, it's even more important. It increases our health span. There's such, such a significant impact on reduced health costs and other, other aspects there. Now, what the Surgeon General was addressing was an epidemic of loneliness. And so this sport, as I've mentioned before and as Michelle mentioned, is very social. There's a huge impact for people, especially as we move into a certain stage of life, our world gets a little smaller. And so this has provided a, an activity, a function that, as I mentioned, has a huge physical impact, but also from a social standpoint, the redeeming elements of it are significant. So this was a, a big hit for us to get this, this kind of feature with the Surgeon General. But again, it wasn't about the physiology, it was about mental health, which is, is important for everybody. I'll take a beat there if there are any questions from the mayor, council.
I think we have multiple questions. Who would?
Let me start?
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, mayor. I'm not sure if you know this one, where is the momentum going with pickleball being a high school sport?
It's quite good. Actually, it, it started mostly collegiate. We're seeing quite a, quite a bit of traction in collegiate right now, but we launched about 18 months ago, high school programs where we're seeding them with equipment, so nets and paddles and, and balls, just from a starter kid standpoint. And then we're looking at developing intramural and, and programs which will stimulate more competition within high schools as well.
Okay, I appreciate this. One might be a little, I guess, under your head, I guess, from the 30,000 feet. Where are we in Kansas? Do we know if there's momentum still going that way or is that something where, I mean, it's the school board, so who knows with that, right?
So a few years back ago, we started looking at, seeing if we can turn this into a high school sport. We have touched base with CACIA, but we have not followed through with a, a really strong proposal yet. I think it was during the COVID months, or COVID years, I should say, that the idea came about. But I think that's something that we want to move forward with. And as Carl had mentioned, a big push, everything always takes steps and, and sometimes it starts from the top down. Universities and colleges are starting to really develop pickleball teams. And I've gotten several phone calls from nearby universities that are interested in using our facilities for, for university play, so. But to answer your question, we have not yet got to CACIA yet, but that's one of the things on our list.
Okay, appreciate it. You said earlier, tournaments of 1,000 to 1,200 participants? That's, is that, that's on the, I, I would assume that's on the larger end of the, the spectrum there. Is that about what we're aiming for with this facility?
It, it's certainly achievable. And so we've got an algorithm that we use to calculate just how large an event could be. And it, it scales with adding days. And so an event like this, or sorry, a facility like this could host, the figure we use is, is 10 participants per court per day. And then you throw on another 10% if it's lit, because the, the length of time during the event is, is extended. You evaluate first that number on a, a daily basis and then there's a, a factor that we use, we divide by 1.5 because Ron plays three events, I play one event, right? So there's an average in there somewhere that we land on. So we use that, that figure to calculate just how many unique participants there are during the course of an event. And so in that, and by the way, I, I used to compete quite a bit and 24-court facility, for example, right next to McArren in Vegas, that, the, the last tournament I played there was 1,100. That was a five-day regional event. And so the regional events that, that we see now, we've got 12 regions, those typically see anywhere from 800 to 1,100 participants. We're looking to do a couple of things. We're adding something called a golden ticket, which will even be a larger event. In many cases, they co-reside with the pro event, so there's a lot of visibility for those. Again, I think this facility will be able to scale to host one of those. And then there are select events that we'll be, we'll be layering in quite a few more as well. And so it, it depends on your appetite, you know, in terms of, of how many sporting events do you want to host. But something like this, you know, once the, once the weather breaks in the spring, you could conceivably host a large event monthly. And then a pro-grade event at least once a season, you know, during the, the summer season probably. And then, you know, regional level events, which would be north of 1,000, I'd say at least two of those per season as well. So one pro, two regional level, so these are 1,000 plus, and then many more of smaller ones, which would attract those three-hour drivers, by the way. As long as they know they're going to get a good, or have a good experience, have some great play and, and competition, you would pull from those metropolitan areas for that.
Okay, where, where's the nearest facility similar to this? I know Norman has one, but I think it's a dual-use tennis and, and pickleball.
Yeah.
Do we have anything that's specifically pickleball that would appeal to these tournaments?
Define near.
Within the three-hour drive, I suppose.
Three-hour. I, I don't, there, there have been some that have been converted. Again, you know, Ron's been participating in many of those. There are tennis clubs that are converted over a three-week period or so, used for the pro event and then converted back. So as I mentioned before, there, there are no, to my knowledge, no permanent facilities of this scale north of the 35th parallel. And so they're, so they're well beyond three-hour drives. Some may convert or double-tape tennis courts or double-stripe tennis courts, but those, again, the, the play, the players' experience on those courts isn't as good as on a permanent court like what we're considering here. And you'll find that that, that creates far more use. People want to come and, and spend time there and play there versus the temporary courts that I've mentioned before, you know, represent about 70% of the, the total number nationally.
Okay, final question. You, you've talked about a number of economic impact studies that you've done. Do you guys have any return on investment estimates tied with those?
We do. I've got a couple of, of pitches that regional directors have put together. I'd be happy to share those with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
As a follow-up.
Okay, appreciate it.
By the way, just a sidebar, I do remember what the number was for the, for this region. This is part of the Rocky Mountain region. The economic impact, and this was based around a 16-court facility in Colorado Springs, I believe, and it was about 4.6 million, based on the events that they held there and other leagues and things that, that were hosted there.
Thank you, mayor. I have a few different questions. First off, number of courts proposed, what would it take for a regional facility or to host regional tournaments? How many courts would you need?
24.
24. National?
About 60.
60? Okay. Are there any areas, so I was just looking at our capacity and the core of the city. So right now, we have 15 courts at Riverside. We have six courts at Seneca Park, which are three minutes from each other. They're about, they're less than a mile from each other. And so repurposing, and then I looked, there's, repurposing one tennis court can allow for four pickleball courts.
That's correct.
So theoretically, repurposing one tennis court at a Riverside facility, would it get us to 25 courts or get us to 20, yeah, 25 courts, which would be more than would be needed for a regional facility within, less than a mile within three minutes of each other? Are there any tournaments that you are aware of across the country where there's a three-minute transit between courts?
Very few. And it, it does, does present logistic issues, operational issues as well. Where do you house the officials, for example? I've, I've only been to one, I think that was actually split like that. And generally what happens, you lose a little bit of that critical mass that makes a tournament a great event to go to. You're, you're hiving off part of the, the attendees from that, that event. And so they're not actually all in the same location at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
I have, oh, sorry, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, mayor. I just had one question. In the greenfield development areas you talked about, what type of surrounding development came from that investment in pickleball, like the types of, whether like restaurants, hotels and everything that kind of built up around that to support pickleball? Or was it just kind of still the greenfield?
It's a mix. I've seen both. In some cases, it, it is literally a greenfield. I mean, as you know, that's a term, you know, from a, it's a ground-up construction. The, some that are, that are built and the, the thinking is that it will attract the infrastructure over time, and I've seen it happen. In other cases, it's, it's built in an area where the infrastructure exists. In most cases, in, in, in that area, those are facilities that are transitioned for a big event, but then they're transitioned back. So there's, there's exceptions to that. As I mentioned before, in, in Arizona, in Texas to some extent, definitely in Florida, those have been built up, permanent facilities. And in most cases, there's a significant infrastructure around those.
So given the proposed location for this, do you think there's a lot of potential to have some of that type of developments surrounding it?
There is. I, I mean, certainly from a, access from the airport. So, you know, if this is a, a hub for major events, certainly that'll be attractive. Just the ease of access, it's, it's fairly close, I believe. South Lake is just, just adjacent or very close to the airport. And then, again, once there's some traction and, and usage increases, it will be, as I mentioned, a center of gravity. And it'll be an optimum place actually to locate to serve that much traffic.
Thank you.
Carl, a couple of questions. Can you talk about costs for some of these? So specifically, cost to building a new permanent, just one court, one court? Or retrofitting a tennis court into, again, I think you said, two pickleball courts can be retrofitted from one tennis court? Can you talk about those, those costs, or four, sorry?
Yeah, so in fact, I've gone through a couple of conversions in my local community of, of two tennis courts that were converted to six. That was about fifty, fifty thousand to convert those. This was a permanent facility. For a greenfield build, ground-up grading, everything, it's somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five, it depends. If you go post-tensioned, which, you know, in that case, you'll create a very durable environment, you won't have the maintenance costs that you would with asphalt, for example, or even the potential cracking in this, in this climate that you can still see with concrete that's not been post-tensioned. And so we're, we're probably talking north of forty-five for a court like that. That's a, one, you know, with four-foot fences around it, not including sidewalks, lights, all of the other infrastructure that goes around it.
Had an opportunity to talk to someone with PPA, the PPA tour. Can you explain to all of us maybe the different levels of pickleball from amateur to pro? Kind of the differences between these types of tournaments? And my follow-up question to that really is, has the city of Wichita gone after maybe the smaller, smaller-scale amateur-level type of tournament, even with what we currently have? Not with new, but with what we currently have in our inventory?
Yeah, I mean, with, let's see, how many, was it nine at Riverside? Nine courts at Riverside? You've got courts there, you've got, oh, there's fifteen there, apologies. So you could hold, you know, there's nine, okay. At Riverside, okay. You could hold a small-scale tournament, you know, tomorrow, with something like that, an amateur tournament. And I would encourage it, you know, just to, I'm sorry, I, I would encourage it just in terms of building a, an acceptance or a, an understanding of, of what a tournament experience is like. So that'll have a significant impact, I think, on the local community until this larger facility's built. In terms of the tiering, if you would, or the differences between the, the leagues, both the PPA, Professional Pickleball Association, and the Association of Pickleball Players, the APP, were launched in the same year in 2020. They both have, you know, a fairly substantial number of pros that play with them. There's some crossover to some extent between them. They both do significant media buys now, so hosting either one would put Wichita in, in the frame, frankly. As I mentioned before, it's ESPN, Fox Sports, Amazon Prime as well, live on, and that's a, a joint venture with the Tennis Channel on that one. So either one of them would be, would be positive for the, the city to host, if possible. And again, in reviewing the plans, it looks like you can scale up for a very nice center court, a championship court, which would seat quite a few, quite a few spectators as well. I'm not quite sure I've answered your question. There's a few other tiers. There's a senior tour called the National Pickleball League. That one's growing very fast. And then there is a, a team competition, which, by the way, the NLP is that, there's another team competition format called Major League Pickleball, which has thirty-six teams now, I think, is the, is the number. That's a, a popular format as well. So there's, there'll, there'll be several leagues that you could approach to host events here. They all have different criteria, different formats. The, the league events don't have, those aren't for amateurs, but they're, they're great for show and, and for showcasing the city. The APP, PPA, and then USA Pickleball, we all have events that, in the, the case of the first two, have a pro level. And then in the case for USA Pickleball, we're, we're mostly focused on amateurs. Those other events, APP and PPA also host amateurs, and we'll, we'll typically see north of a thousand participants in those events. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Just for the record, and Troy, I'm on the city's website regarding pickleball. Under the Riverside Tennis Center says nine outdoor courts with lights for night play and six indoor courts. Is that incorrect?
I think the indoor courts are double-striped tennis in the dome, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the outdoor, we only have nine pickleball courts.
But a total of fifteen capacity with indoor courts included?
Yeah, you could, you could actually have more capacity with all the other courts as well. If you double-stripped them.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can we, Troy, while you're up there, can you talk about the inventory that we currently have regarding pickleball?
Sure.
I know that it's spread out throughout our system, but I'd like to get an actual feel of the inventory of courts, indoor and outdoor, owned by the city of Wichita, but then also an inventory of courts in the city of Wichita. So that would include YMCA, some of the private businesses. I'd just like a, a big overview. Has that been studied?
So I don't have the exact numbers in regards to all, all of them, including all the private sector areas. The YMCA has just opened up a huge push for, out in the West Side, their pickleball area that they've actually have indoor spaces that used to be gymnasiums. So they've been actually creating a lot of buzz in regards to pickleball out there. I can speak for the city. And in the wintertime, several of our gymnasiums are takedown for pickleball. Edgemore is a great example. I've gone out there to play pickleball with a, a really interesting group of pickleball players. And so we'll tape it off and we'll have three or four courts. So each one of our recreation centers actually do rentals right now through, through the wintertime in the indoor courts. And each one of them is probably three or four courts. Outdoor courts, if my memory serves me right, and Councilmember Glasscock, you're on, on the website, you might be able to help me out. I think we have thirty-one or thirty-two outdoor pickleball courts.
We have thirty-six total, and that includes the striped ones at Riverside.
Right.
Actually, yes, that includes the striped ones at Riverside, double-stripped.
So other than six that we actually built brand-new over at Riverside, all these other ones were actually converted from tennis courts. And so one of the reasons why we're really looking at this project, and we have this conflict of tennis, and we have this conflict with pickleball. The idea was to grow the number of pickleball courts without losing the number of tennis courts. We have taken several tennis courts away from the tennis community, and they're not very happy about it. It's an ongoing feud on a lot of different levels. But over at Riverside in particular, we added two new tennis courts for the USTA to host large tennis tournaments at that location. We are going gangbusters on tennis over at Riverside. So it's not just pickleball that is growing. There's a lot of other sports that are growing, but tennis is growing as well. We're doing a lot more tennis tournaments, we're doing a whole lot more tennis lessons. We have staff over there that we brought in particularly to bolster tennis over at Riverside. So when we, if we were to move pickleball over to Riverside, we would be pushing out the tennis community. And we'd have to find other locations for them to have tournaments and, and participate at that same level. So that's the whole reason why we're really looking at new courts, a new location, a place very specific to pickleball, so they can not only do their own tournaments, they can have their own gatherings, they can do their own socials. It would be a place just for pickleball.
Mayor, this would be a question for USA Pickleball. Is there a detriment for restriping of courts? Do you still play on restriped courts as part of regional and national tournaments?
Yes.
You still do? So according to my calculations, if we have fifteen courts, we also, if we repurpose just for a regional tournament, or we double-stripe all the tennis courts too, also be pickleball courts, that'd be a total of sixty-seven courts that we could have at Riverside. Sixty-seven courts that allow restriped, or a partial, some of them would be restriped, some of them would be just pickleball courts. It'd be sixty-seven courts we could have, which would have capacity for a national tournament, correct?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, sixty is a number that we've worked with in the past. We had seventy-two this last year at Brookhaven in, in Texas. This coming year will have, will be at forty-one. So it fluctuates, and whatever that number is defines just how many participants can be.
So restriping does not prohibit regional or national groups from looking at a facility?
Dual-stripping?
Yeah, dual-striping.
No, typically, you know, when you, you'll have dedicated courts in a facility, and then when you expand for a large event, that's, that's a very typical approach.
So if we had nine courts that were singularly striped just for pickleball, plus an additional fifty-eight courts, excuse my math right now, fifty-eight courts that are restriped, that would be a positive, that we could still bring people on?
Certainly, certainly. I, I mean, you do need to keep in mind other, and I, I've taken a look at the Riverside site. There's a couple, couple concerns I'd have initially. One is parking, access, because it's at the end of that peninsula, if you would. Second thing, I'm not sure consideration's been given to this, but it is, with the river running right by it, there's a, a number of residents just north of it, around in, in an arc. The river basically amplifies noise. And so while it's five hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the courts to the front porch of, of one of the homes, about three hundred feet of that is river, which doesn't positively impact the, what acoustic propagation, what, what changes there would be to propagation. So it'd be the equivalent of being about two hundred and fifty feet from a very large-scale complex to residential area. So you may have an acoustic issue if you were to go scale it up like that. And I don't know if there's anything existing now. I think the courts where they are now, there's a commercial or industrial, I'm not sure what it is, to the west across the river, which should be no impact from an acoustic standpoint. But if you expanded further, you may see some.
Okay, thank you for that context. I'm sure Councilman Ballard, or Vice Mayor Ballard, would love to have more trees to act as a sound barrier in Riverside, too. So thank you, I appreciate your question.
I was gonna add, thank you, Carl. I was gonna add one thing, Councilmember, and just kind of from our experiences, just to try to manage the expectations. When we've chatted with these organizations, and Josh is here, too, if you want, if you want to ask him any specific, we haven't had any legs or any momentum on taking the existing Riverside and doing, I think, what you're thinking about to attract that national. One of the things that we've been up to getting, maybe, Carl, you can chat with it, is taking a tournament, playing some indoor and some outdoor was problematic to try to do where you're going, and so it's outdoor. And also looking for that, truly that facility. So just to kind of manage expectations, when we, when we've chatted about what that economic impact is, it's in a dedicated facility with, not dual-striped, with their own facility. And while, yes, you can play on it, we have not had the momentum to host what you're referring to yet. So just want to kind of manage that.
I'll just add one follow-up before I allow, Vice Mayor Ballard had a couple of questions. Just, again, after learning about all the different leagues and all the different competitions that we could attract, even with our current inventory, and your challenge to us is, try it. You said there are small-scale amateur tournaments that we could try to pitch out with our current facilities. So I guess this is a, an ask back to staff, with our current facilities, can we also try, even now, whatever happens with the future of South Lake, to try to get, again, small wins of getting these tournaments?
So yes, we actually have hosted several smaller amateur tournaments, where we've had folks from Oklahoma, folks coming up from Kansas City to actually participate. I, I've spoken to pickleball folks from all around the region, and, yeah, they, they come down here. However, it's not the place that they really want to come to. The places that they want to come to is an actual facility that's actually built for pickleball. There is a, an amateur league that I spoke to as well, that they have, have promoted pickleball locations throughout the region. And one of the things we really wanted to do is actually start creating a rivalry with the Wichita pickleball folks against Kansas City or Oklahoma City, Tulsa. And so there's actually, at a much smaller perspective, actually travel back and forth, but actually having them come here to, to Wichita. So we, we have tried it, we will talk more about it, but we are encouraged to do more. This facility would really enhance that ten times more.
I have a quick question. Troy, have you heard any complaints? I have not. I just spent a lot of time over at Riverside, but have you heard any complaints about noise so far, the way that anything is right now?
No.
I just wondered. Thank you for bringing that up. That's not something that I would have thought of, just because the houses are on the other side of the river, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
I'm having to think about it too much these days, yeah.
Thank you. And I'm not, this may be for Troy. We've talked a lot about tournaments and trying to recruit, you know, events. What about just daily or weekly or whatever? So I, I should know this, but I'm not a, a pickleball player, so I'm sorry. But let's say that, you know, Johnson and I want to go out and we're gonna have a fun evening tonight, and we're gonna play pickleball. Do we reserve the courts, or is it just first come, first served?
So with this many courts at one location?
I mean now, with what we have.
With now?
Yeah.
Okay. Depends on the timeframe. Over at Riverside, I think we charge two dollars a day in regards to using the pickleball courts. Other pickleball courts, they're, that are open to the public, there's, there's no charge. So there's a lot of different ways of playing pickleball with your friends in groups. If they're a small group, you can play. If there's a larger group that's waiting, there's different round robins that happen in regards to giving everybody a chance to play. But we'll talk about it over at Riverside. So you can definitely call in and get a reservation, and so we will hold that reservation for you to play. In the evenings, that, that particular facility is quite busy.
And that was gonna be my question, is it, we find that it's at capacity?
In the evenings, there's quite a few people playing pickleball, yes.
Because I, I totally appreciate that we'd be looking for the, you know, regional tournaments or the national tournaments. Of course, that's important, but I think we heard it'd be maybe three or four weekends of the year. And so just want to, you know, learn more if just the daily Wichitaans who are using the facilities are saying they want more opportunities. I haven't heard it from many of my constituents, that doesn't mean that my colleagues haven't or others haven't, but I was just curious about, not just thinking about the, the tournament aspect.
So we've brought a professional onboard, his name's Noi, and he does tons of lessons for us. And one of his concerns and complaints is that he doesn't have enough court space. And the same thing's happening with tennis. They're all competing for the same particular piece of real estate. So if this was to be constructed and built, there'd be twenty-four courts that could be used for more programming in regards to lessons, leagues, and, and local tournaments, lots of clinics that could be done. So the idea is to really bring in a lot of new players, bring in folks at the very entry level, and giving them opportunities to get the basics, and then learn from our staff, and then be able to go to other locations. And, and there's other places to play pickleball here in Wichita as well, where they can continue to play.
Thank you.
This is a really important point you brought up, and, and what I, I tried to address in this, in this slide, and that is... in this, in this slide, and that is, the, the first piece, the 30-minute drive time, those are your daily users. And so we're not, I'm not talking about the, the big events, the pro events or even large amateur events. These are the guys that show up several times a week. And so you've got a large market already for that. And so with the 24-court facility, A, they're, they're always there, they're always open, you don't have to stripe them, you know, they don't have to be temporarily striped to accommodate an increasing market over time. And one last thing, based on something that Troy just mentioned, is programming. So the, the design on this would, would actually allow almost a modular approach to programming. So typically in smaller facilities, you've got, it's all clinic during a certain period or it's all drop-in play or open play, it's called. It's reserved play. And a facility of this size, you could actually program these different court modules in different ways. So the, the clinics going on, you own courts eight through, or sorry, courts six through 12. You've got drop-in play of a certain level on one through six and then a higher level on courts 13 through 18. And so the, having something of this scale gives you a lot more flexibility in how you program, which also, you know, can impact revenue. If you're running lessons, leagues, all of these can be, generate revenue for the city as well.
Thank you.
Question for you, Carl, maybe Troy. Do these facilities of multiple courts, do they have a, an onsite director 24/7 or just during the day? Or how do they do, manage that?
There's a couple of different approaches. Probably the largest facility in the country, I think it still is, it'll be surpassed here fairly soon, is in Florida. It's in East Naples Community Park. It's 60-plus courts. Their approach had been to retain a concessionaire that would come in and operate the leagues and, and all of the aspects of day-to-day management of it. Other municipalities are hiring talent that will act as a GM and in some cases they're dual-purpose, they also teach. If the program's large enough, there may be a, a number of headcount assigned to it that not only would operationally run it, but then would conduct the, conduct the instruction as well. But it varies.
Do they charge a fee for daily play?
Again, that varies. It depends on what the municipality's strategy is, you know, is it intended to be a, a moneymaker, you know, a revenue driver for the city? Is it purely an amenity for its, its citizens? It's, it's different. Every facility has a, a different approach to that. Typically, there's, there's a drop in fee, though. I, I'm seeing that more often than not.
Yeah, I noticed, I, I do play pickleball at the West Y and they converted the tennis courts completely to pickleball. There's no more basketball. Great facility. I, I've noticed a kind of leveling off of play, though. Still busy, but you can get in a game within five minutes, 10 minutes, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, so in terms of the leveling off, you do want enthusiastic organizers, you know, either organizing the drop-in play to make sure that everybody gets a good, a good workout. If you're running socials and things like that, there's a, a number of things that can be done to, to continue to pull in new players. Troy mentioned earlier, onboarding newbies. And, and I think that's, that's very important, getting people acquainted with the sport, comfortable with the rules and scoring and that type of thing. That'll continue to drive growth over time. But a facility, you know, without leadership or some type of organizing element can, you know, it can flatten off.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I highly recommend someone onsite or someone that there, is there quite frequently and is necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Carl, appreciate it. So we still have a few more slides to go through, but I think we got through most of the meat and potatoes. But I'm gonna run through these other ones pretty quickly. And Nick, I'm gonna go ahead and do your portion, just so we can get there a little bit quicker. So we did a, a sound study at this location down at South Lakes. We were very concerned about making sure that we were gonna be compliant and, and good neighbors. And so once we started learning a little bit about the issues with sound, and it's great to hear Carl mentioning that there's other things that they're mitigating, ways to, to reduce the sound issue, we decided to do some research about this. We were actually going to actually host and put in the, where's the, there's the, the pickleball facility up here on the north end of Holly Fields. But knowing how close it is to neighbors, we did a sound study and we found that we would be, might be impacting them a little bit. It was a very quick and easy redirection down to the bottom or the south end, using the very south end fields to mitigate that situation. So this is a little bit more information in regards to all the details, but in the short version of all this is we just moved from the north to the south to address any kind of sound issues and we're way beyond any impact to the community. Here's a little bit more about the actual decibels that we would be looking at. And so we definitely fit in within all the criteria. A little bit more about the design. Another reason why we really kind of liked this area and the idea of, of hosting a large tournament here, we have over 900 spaces of parking here. We have plenty of room to add in tents for VIPs, a location for the umpires and referees, opportunities for our sponsors to put out their tables, merchandise, information, merchandising and other information can happen here as well. So it becomes an event where we can actually bring in a stage and maybe there is a little bit of music, but definitely an award ceremony that's, would be very, very worthy. And talking to two of the different professional leagues that are out there, nobody else is being able to do that. And that was one of the reasons why this location is really exciting to them. Although Riverside can be used, but there's a lot of different issues in regards to space, a lot of issues in regards to parking and logistics. Here's a space that's not gonna impact anybody in regards to traffic and we can really host some great events here. Well, let me go back a little bit as well. We also are building up berms all the way around the courts and there's actually a big hill over here. Our former Parks and Recreation Director, his name is Doug Cupper, and he had instructed a large mound of dirt there, and so we call it Mount Cupper. But everywhere around here, there's actually gonna be built up berms for several reasons to kind of make it a little bit more inclusive in, in, inside the pickleball area and to help reduce the wind. We'll be putting trees on top of these, these berms as well. It's kind of spread out nicely, so it's broken up in sections. You see a lot of other designs where it's just a straight line of courts, this kind of breaks it up a little bit. The championship court here, actually, we can take one of the courts out and put in temporary seating in there to make that the quality massive championship court that they would really like to see. So just really kind of aesthetically pleasing, a really, really nice sight. Clubhouse, clubhouse would have restrooms, offices and an opportunity for concessions as well. And a little bit more about JB, I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnston, you asked a little bit about staffing. Currently, we have a pro and all of the programming and activities from Riverside would transfer over here and he would get an office over here. We would probably have one onsite manager and both of these positions would probably be contracted, but would be very much associated with our department and directed with us. We'd be using part-time seasonal for the front desk activities and all the other programming that we have. So this gives a really nice basic foundation for day-to-day activities, would support all of the tournaments as well. For the really, really large tournaments, we'd probably have to bring in some extra porta-potties because this, these restrooms probably would not be enough. But for everything else, these would be really adequate. Here's a quick look at the championship courts with the seating and shade. A little bit about the lighting as well. We went a little bit of, of a different direction. We're using LED lights and these lights are really efficient and they're actually a little bit lower. And the reason why is because we really wanted to reduce the light pollution and these lights really hit hard onto the courts and are really directed to the courts. So I wanted to throw this one in here. This summer, we're hosting a three-on-three sand soccer professional tournament over at OJ Watson. OJ Watson, we have all of our volleyball courts and we're gonna be renting that space out for this traveling professional tournament. They, they're gonna be going from the east to the west and so they're just gonna be coming all the way across. And these sports tournaments, we're bringing more and more items into, like this, into Wichita. So this is gonna help put Wichita on the map. Trying to go in after those other type of tournaments such as pickleball will help put Wichita on the map. Now, I'm gonna correct myself because I just looked over at, at my very good friend over here and actually she told me that Wichita is on the map for all of these tournaments that, that she brings in and hosts. So this would just be another one of those items. Really kind of excited because things like our disc golf over at CLAP is expanding and we're gonna be hosting some large tournaments there. Also over at CLAP, we're gonna be hosting cross-country regionals through WSU. So we'll have collegiate cross-country over at CLAP. These are all things that we're working on, not just pickleball, it keeps moving and moving. Couple of things just to wrap up a little bit. This location has tons of potential for naming rights and sponsorships. Bob has brought in a group that has been talking to all of our departments about opportunities for sponsorships. The ice rink is another great example that we can actually use for sponsorships. We've actually received a couple of grants. One in particular, the Latner Foundation has provided a grant for the center courts to be named after Becky Middleton, who I talked to a little bit earlier. By rebidding, we'll be able to actually start looking at other contractors to bid on, on these projects. And by the way, the first bid, we were $600,000 below the estimated costs. So the sooner we rebid, the sooner we might have those opportunities to have a below-cost estimate. So the end of the presentation, our recommendation is to go back out for bid for construction. So we, we answered some questions, but you might have some more.
I'll start with one question first and foremost. The current price tag for this specific project, it got inflated from where it first started. And I think community wants to know, number one, why it got inflated? And then at the same time, how much maintenance would have been required for this new project versus what we currently pay for maintenance on that land right now with really not a lot of amenities currently? Because I'm getting very concerned that the next topic that we're gonna talk about is the actual budget. And we've gotten this presentation before and I think it's a nice reminder to community that in 2025, we are going to be outspending more than we're receiving. And so we're gonna have a shortfall.
Yes.
And so we're gonna have to be responsible about these tough decisions. And I know that this is part of the CIP, but I see on here that financial priorities for CIP will be existing debt service as number one, number two, projects in progress, number three, projects in design, number four, projects in prior CIP, and then finally, new projects. And so I'm trying to be responsible with these very large price tag decisions. And so if you can explain to me the current budget for this, how it got inflated to its current price tag and what maintenance would look like right now versus with a new facility?
Sure. So currently, this project has actually been initiated. So the dollars have already been initiated for this and it was actually a prior project. It's already past design because it's already been designed and it's ready, it's actually been, been bid. The bid actually came out underneath the estimated costs. We were very close to actually constructing this. It was ready to go out the door. So one reason why it was increased from about $3 million to about $6 million was to add the additional courts, to make this a facility that's gonna be able to host larger events. And the construction cost increased. So when we first were talking about this project, this goes back almost six years ago. Here's a timeline of all the different step points that we made through here, going through Design Council, going through Council. But prior to 2021, two and a half years before that, is when we were actually discussing a lot of items in regards to pickleball. At that time, the pickleball inventory courts was very, very low. So we started converting a few more. And if we add this, there's always gonna be increased demand. But I think if we add this, it's really gonna suffice many of the needs of the pickleball community and I think they would be extremely happy and very, very grateful. Costs in regards to operations and maintenance. Currently, right now, it's grass being irrigated. So we mow that grass once a week, we probably irrigate it two or three times a week. I couldn't tell you the exact cost for that particular square acreage, but it's, it's not a whole lot in regards to the overall budget. The great thing about courts, whether basketball courts, tennis courts, or here in particular, pickleball courts, concrete, we would probably have to spray them down once or twice a week. Staff, that would be a, a staff duty. But in general, the courts and all the infrastructure around it really doesn't take a whole lot of maintenance. The actual building will probably have HVAC as well as heating in there. We'll probably have to add some maintenance costs in regards to maintaining the HVAC as well as the, the heating costs. But relatively, it's not anything that we not, can't fit into our current budget that we have right now. So I don't think that's gonna be anything that's really gonna have a huge impact in our maintenance budget.
Troy, question for, I'm sure you already have an, an operating budget for this facility. Can you tell us what that budget is for, for the, the pro there, the, the part-time help, HVAC, replacement cost? I'm sure you put some replacement cost in there to, to replace it when it breaks down and stuff.
It's gonna be very similar to what we have over here at the tennis center. It's roughly about $250,000 to $300,000. Of that, a lot of the revenues that come in, since we use contractor staff for lessons and helping us with some of the tournaments, those revenues help pay for those particular salaries.
So what's the net?
Actually...
Cost versus income? What's the net operating cost of that facility?
So last year and the year before, was the first time in several years that we were actually in the black. This year, we're gonna definitely be in the black because we have already got a, a big huge start on, on moving forward.
This is on the tennis center?
Yes.
And the same projection you have for the, this facility?
Actually, I think we might have a little bit more because there's more, more courts.
Okay, does that include capital cost of replacing things when it breaks? Or breaks down, or does that come from your budget or?
That would probably work in later on in regards to capital dollars or capital other projects that we might have.
Okay, so it does not right now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But again, similar to over at the tennis center, other than items such as HVAC, we really haven't had any major maintenance concerns.
The parking lot needs to be fixed.
That's been...
It's terrible.
Yeah, well, that's all of our parking lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. Oh, sorry. Somebody else? Okay, sorry. I actually had someone text me a question and ask if there is a cost recovery model that describes user fees as a defined revenue component?
That's what we're talking about. So a lot of the revenues will come from fees, most of them probably lessons, leagues, tournaments, small amount in regards to daily rental. So just like we have over at Riverside, you're paying two bucks to use it for an hour and that's opposed to larger drop-in fees at Chicken and Pickle and, and over at the Y.
Thank you.
I don't know where to go with this, but this, I've appreciated this entire presentation and it kind of reminds me of some of the conversation we tend to have in this city. So talking about what we currently have, the double striped, it's good, but it's not what the sport wants. So talking about what we currently have, the double striped, it's good, but it's not what the sport wants. And looking at an opportunity for Wichita to do something bigger, which is what could be a regional attraction, especially in South Wichita, versus just kind of accepting what we have. And I feel like we're kind of in a space of how folks say Wichita sometimes just accepts being good rather than pushing for having a great opportunity like this. And the thoughtfulness and expansion and even seeing the potential expansion there of what, six more courts that could happen in a space like this that is dedicated solely to that. And just thinking about the whole pickleball group that I think blew us both up for a couple of years trying to get Edgemore converted. This could be pretty big and thinking about the development that could happen around it, listening to the potential regional tournaments, of course, with everyday use. This actually is starting to make me think a little bit different about it. I think this could be pretty big, but I think it'd come down to do we want to settle for what we have because it's good enough? Or push for something that really could push us into a different stratosphere and bring in folks here? And this presentation really kind of helped me to see that a little better than what I saw before. So just wanted to say thank you for that. Because I hear the double striped complaint and also the kind of the tension between tennis and pickleball quite a bit. But looking at those different lines on there, I think this could be something cool. And if we catch on to it now, we really could be that hub for the region for something like this. And much like the ICE Center, because there's spaces within one or three minutes, you know, there's opportunities to practice before you get to a facility like this. So I just appreciate the work that you all have done and having all the different folks come in and give that information to them.
I think if we get sponsorships and naming rights, it could really have an impact in regards to the operations as well as the budget for the construction. Councilmember Blue Ball had really looked at this as an opportunity of an anchor for this community to bring in more development. Not necessarily to the magnitude of Stryker, but I think that's the kind of things that he was looking forward to seeing with this. And there's plenty of space in the rest of the park area for adding more activities or amenities that could just bolster this area to be a really big gem.
If this was approved, would there be a challenge versus the park director who could win in the city?
No.
Would you lose every time or would you win?
I would make sure I win. Yes. And that challenges anytime, by the way. Well, I hope the answer to your questions, I know this went really long and I apologize. There was a lot of information and a lot of facts. I thought was very important that we share this with you all so you can have all the information, have informed decisions and have all the facts. If you have any more questions, in particular, I think you guys met with one of my friends, Matt Mayfield, and he provided you guys with a lot of information. If there's anything more that you would like information on, please let me know.
I just want to make one closing comment. Thank you for the information and thank you for the guests who joined us today to answer all of our questions. When I joined this council in 2019 was when Stryker was being completed. And I remember the very last project management meeting for Stryker was my very first meeting that I attended. And one of the comments that was made as they were giving me some background is that we moved soccer from South Wichita to District Two to Stryker. And that a promise was made that we would replace something in South Wichita for the residents there, but also for the whole community. So that's something that's also going through my mind as we're having these discussions is we did make a promise that we would try and replace the soccer that was removed from South Wichita. So thank you again, Troy.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have some comments. So as this resides in District Four in South Wichita, I'll try and speak on behalf of that as well. First off, I'm a pickleball player. I appreciate, Greg and I played together, I think we beat a few people. And so I enjoyed the opportunity to go out there and play with some of the members of the pickleball community in different groups throughout the past couple of months to be able to understand more about this. It's part of mine. This is all the emails I've gotten regarding pickleball. It's the most emails I've gotten regarding anything since I've been elected. So I have printed off every single one and I have tried to review it as well. In addition to that, I think there's different components to this presentation that I think are different conversations. I think there's a, what Councilmember Tuttle said, in regarding the need for South Wichita some amenity. I think there's a neighborhood component of how do we be good to the neighbors? And that's separate than the regional component too. I think the regional component makes sense at Riverside where there's a capacity building. And I'll get to that in a second, but I think there is a need for something at the South Lakes complex that supports the neighbors in there. That doesn't have to be the regional approach. I think those are two different things. In addition, what Mayor Wu said, we are facing budget shortfalls in the coming years too. So how do we be good stewards realizing that, yes, CIP and budget's different, but they do go hand in hand? And our decisions that regard CIP, as Councilman Johnson said, affect the operating budget long-term as well that will have an effect on our budget process. So I was trying to just run some quick numbers. And first off, I think quality of life again is important in South Wichita. And there's the quality of life of what amenities can we offer quality of life? But there's a quality of life as there's homeless encampments at the South Lake Sports Complex on the right side of the encampment or right side of the photo as well, that I get comments from neighborhoods off, yes, right around there is where we have homeless encampments. And so there's a quality of life component too of how do we balance adding additional amenities while also making sure we have quality of life and enforcement of our laws too? And I do believe that there is a way that we can balance all of these, and I think we have to balance all of them. And I want to thank Councilman Blue Ball for all the work he's done on this and trying to bring investment. It's unfortunate, I used to play here when it was SESA Soccer. I grew up here every single weekend playing soccer and I was sad to see it leave this area because I think it was a great facility. But Stryker is a fantastic facility in East Wichita as well. When we're looking at numbers that were, that was mentioned by USA Pickleball, and I understand everything that government touches usually balloons in terms of the cost analysis of it, so these are exact reflections of it. So $34,000 to $45,000 per court is what was estimated, and that's a greenfield development. So let's say adding, and as Councilman Johnson's point, not just re-striping, but adding new courts to Riverside. And all we would need to do is add nine courts for a regional facility based on their current capacity. There'd be maybe a couple of courts that'd be restriped. But based on those numbers, that would cost $306,000 of the city budget. Again, understanding that there would be balloon costs because we're working in a bid process and it might be a little bit different. South Lakes, to address the need for a neighborhood facility, let's say we add six courts, which would be the third most courts of any facility in Wichita behind Riverside and Edgemore, and it'd be tied with Seneca. So between Seneca and South Lakes would be a total of 12 courts out of our 36 would be in my district. So it's a huge capacity in itself. And actually, more than that, because you have two at Osage. So it'd actually be, what, 14 courts out of the 36 would be in District Four, which I think is a huge capacity. So again, understanding that things could be ballooned, you have $204,000 that it would cost. And that one may cost more because you have to add amenities, you'd have to add lighting, infrastructure. So let's balloon that up to a million. So we go from $204,000 to a million to build a neighborhood facility. Riverside, you know, $306,000 is what the price per court is. Let's balloon that up to $1 million as well. So we have $2 million that we could offer a regional facility, that we could also offer a neighborhood facility. And then to address the pressing need that I hear from individuals, and especially given the state's decision yesterday to likely not move forward on funding for a component of emergency shelter and enforcement of our laws. Let's say we advocate $4 million of this $6 million so we can enforce our laws, which is a quality of life issue that I think has an effect on building a park in South Lakes if you have an encampment over there as well. So let's say we add $4 million of the $6 million that goes towards investment of enforcing our laws. You have $6 million, you get a regional facility, you get a neighborhood facility at South Lakes, and you better allocate money in terms of our priority projects later on. And you can do everything for that type of money. I think that is probably the best way to spend our money. We can get every single objective and we can make sure to better disperse our funds right now. So those are kind of my thoughts. I think Troy said, a quote that I wrote was that Riverside quote can be used currently, but the questions are the traffic impact. And I think those are questions that we can address as a community because we know, as Councilman Johnson said, that we're probably going to have to redo a parking lot and make sure that it's more accessible anyway. We also bring people in the downtown core, which is one of our objectives of Visit Wichita, is to encourage development in the downtown core as well. And I think we can be the regional destination for many sports and to do all these things, spending money wisely and addressing everything. So I know that was long, I wrote a lot of notes, but I'm happy to hear the rest of the discussion.
I don't have any comments.
Bob, I would like to ask you how this feasibly could move forward. I see on our packet, a recommendation was to go back out to bid for construction. And again, that's for the $6 million plan. Now you have a council member with this idea. How does this now move forward?
Well, we'd look for some consensus today if at all possible. You can't vote, right? But we were looking to see if there's a direction you want to go. Did, was it nine courts in Riverside that you?
Nine courts would get up to the needed 24 courts.
If the idea is to get a neighborhood oriented complex in South Lakes at six courts, I'd like the opportunity to go back and look at what that would look, you know, would be. I think just six courts without shade, structures and all of that would be difficult, given the openness of it. We'd have to look at some of that. But so if we're not, if we're with the courts and then you ask us to come back with some concept as for part of the CIP, we can do that with the remaining, whether it's $4 million or slightly less. Going, if I understand it right, to shelter as part of our MAC concept, right? But specifically for shelter. Then what we would do is incorporate that into our planning going forward as we put the pieces together on MAC as well as then prepare the CIP for you. And then we would bring these pickleball courts, if we can define a project, put a project together, we'll bring them to you for approval and authorization to go out to bid for this work.
I just have a question. Is the money that was a lot set aside for this project? I mean, is, if it's ARPA money or there are like rules to where if he wants to shuffle it around, we could still do that?
We should be able to.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to see Councilmember Glasscock's ideas since we're looking for consensus. I would like to see that presented, just because he put so much thought into it. What does that look like in the different areas that he talked about? And then also some feedback from Visit Wichita and Pickleball USA, just to see what they think and how attractive that could be.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to see options, just to see what these, all these options look like, including possibly keeping the pickleball court. But you know, with some of the movement here in the last week with funding for the MAC, it's definitely something that we need to look at. So I appreciate that. But I, just options to see where council is on this.
Not to be partisan at all, but I think there are two city-owned pickleball courts in District Five, Buffalo Park?
That's correct.
So maybe we can look at putting a few more in District Five too. I'm just saying that, you know, of the, how many courts in the city?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So two of them are in District Five. I think we maybe deserve a little bit more than that.
I want a library.
What's that? It's Sedgwick County, yeah.
And I recognize that these numbers don't include building out an infrastructure. And so there will be additional costs that I, I like the manager's recommendation of, hey, build in what would these cost? And then we can look at how much, make, you know, not the priority, but having a regional component, having the neighborhood component, and then what can we divert towards the emergency shelter space, I think would be the priority.
I would like to clarify one thing. Sedgwick County Park is actually in your district. It's in District Four, your district, so. It's in District Six. They took it away from District Five, put it in District Six, a couple of miles there, so.
I'd just like to make a comment. Of course, I'm always open for options, you know, explore everything that we can before we make a good decision. My only concern, and I'm neutral at this point, I want to be a blank slate until we see this new information presented to us. But I do have a concern of South Lakes, that if we go from 24 courts to six courts, what is the viability that of that project? And is that even a good use of funds? I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying that needs to be something that's looked at because when this project doubled in cost, it was because we were presented with information that, you know, if we took something good and made it great, we'd get a bigger return on investment. And so if we take something and strip it down so much, is the return on investment going to be so diminished that it's not worth it? So I don't know. I, that's why I'll look forward to seeing more information as it's presented. But I do want to look at the big picture and where we want to go. I've seen, you know, the success of sporting events at Stryker in District Two and the economic impact that it can have. I don't know if it can here. That's for people who are smarter than me to help us determine. But again, as my, my good friend and Councilmember Johnson said, I don't, I don't want us to not think we deserve nice things because we do. Thank you.
And I do want to echo Councilmember Tuttle's point, realizing that when I knocked on 4,000 doors, one person in District Four was in favor of the pickleball complex and South Lakes. And so though I think we have capacity, I think neighbors around that area might use the complex. Is there a better way that we can engage that? Is it pickleball at South Lakes? Is it a BMX track? Is it something else that neighbors would want in that district? And so I'm open to those conversations, but I do think the priority has to be the regional component. In terms of when we talk about pickleball, the regional component, how do we attract people? And how can we do them the most cost-efficient way utilizing the resources we have? While still, as Councilman Johnson said, not just re-striping, adding courts and making it a world-class facility, but how can we maybe better serve the neighbors and the neighbor? Maybe it's not pickleball, maybe it's BMX, maybe it is pickleball, so.
And just to add on if I can, Councilmember Glasscock, I appreciate those comments. I also think that, you know, some of the amenities that we have in the city, certainly it's in your district, but it's citywide. Like I don't consider Stryker just to be a District Two amenity. The impact that it has in the entire city is significant. You know, I, I was getting texts from people in my district saying they'd go to, they'd go to South Lakes to play pickleball. They're like, yay, pickleball. So I think we need to look at like a citywide perspective and then also, as you mentioned, regionally.
If I may, I may point out that, I'm sure Councilman Tuttle realizes this, that Stryker is privately run and not city-run.
Yeah. We have a contract with them.
Yeah, it's a contract. So, you know, we spent a lot, spent a lot of time out there watching grandkids play soccer and it's all hours of all days Sunday morning and every, every which time. So would it be possible for the tennis complex and/or all the tennis and pickleball to be an enterprise fund? Is that a possibility? Stand on its own, doesn't get the budget?
We treat it as it is, as enterprise. We track and monitor the revenues over expenses. And our goal is always to be in the black. It's way different than some of our other operationals, especially like aquatics. Aquatics is not a moneymaker whatsoever, but it's an amenity that the community wants and needs. So it was really exciting when we have increased the programming over at Riverside, brought in quality staff over there. The tennis pro, Brent, he came from Genesis. He's bringing in a lot of great ideas. He has great connections and contacts with the USTA, United States Tennis Association. The USTA is taking huge notice in regards to all of our tennis activities. Along with all that is all the pickleball that's going on over there as well. And so we are definitely moving in the black in that area.
When you look at these, Troy, do you take into account HR, a fee for HR, a fee for finance? Or is it just purely direct cost?
So I'm looking at direct cost because I already have built in to my budget for my supervision of that staff and that facility.
Where's the enterprise fund would be assessed indirect cost?
Could be, depends on how we set it up. But there's a lot of different ways to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. When we get back from staff, more information regarding this idea of expanding permanent courts. this idea of expanding permanent courts at Riverside. Couple of things have been brought up regarding parking and accessibility. So, I'd like to know, number one, is there actual space? Okay, so the answer is yes, there is actual space for nine, nine possibly?
Mayor, we need to master plan it. We need to figure out what we can get on that space and what we can sport with the infrastructure, yes.
Then the other question I would have, just nearby, we no longer have a parking lot across the street from the Mid-American All-Indian Center, because the weight of vehicles is just too heavy for our water infrastructure underneath. And I know that this has been talked about in the past regarding, can this be a green space, an open space? How else can we activate that space? And so, I'd like to throw that also as a possibility. What could that look like as maybe, I don't know what the weight of a pickleball court will be on top of that land, but I'm just trying to think outside the box again, to try to utilize a lot of our already city-owned property to best utilize more of a big master plan in the core.
I think we'll have some issues of even that load on top of the ceiling or the roof, but we can take a look at it.
I have just one last comment. I appreciate the creativity of all of this, but I do want to highlight that the state legislature has a huge purse of more than $1 billion. And because of a lack of action, we are now looking at changing our quality of life plans to support something that they should be supporting. And I think that's unfortunate.
Dado.
Can I add something to the discussion? So, right now, what it looks like is $1 million for some sort of improvements and expansion of Riverside, $1 million for a neighborhood expansion of courts, again, permanent courts for pickleball. Would it be in South Lake and then $3 to $4 million regarding homeless sheltering, specifically for our multi-agency center, one-stop-shop location? Is there any way, maybe instead of, thinking about it just as a budget for that facility, if we added the $1 million to Riverside, how can we best utilize that location for expansion of pickleball? But maybe it might not just be permanent courts outdoor? Could it be the bubble that gets expanded? I'm just asking questions that, again, pushes us beyond just thinking, we just need to build outdoor pickleball courts.
We'll take a look, Mayor, at what it would take to make this a viable regional facility. And again, hearing that there's some concern about indoor/outdoor uses when you're doing tournaments. So, we'll take a look at that. Okay?
Thank you very much, Troy, and thank you to all who came here to support pickleball. And we appreciate your time.
Mayor, the next item was scheduled to be a discussion of economic development. And given the length of time that we've had on pickleball, we can't do justice to this item and really get good feedback from you going forward. So, we're going to, if this is okay with the council, we'll push this back to the next workshop and make, try to make that your primary discussion item, which means that we move on now to a discussion of the budget, kind of the next step in the budget, and seek some guidance from you, especially in the area of CIP. So, if that's okay, Mayor, then we'll move forward.
Yes, City Manager.
Elizabeth?
Good morning. I guess everyone's getting situated. I'm Elizabeth Gultry. I work in the finance department in the Budget Office. And today is our third City Council Workshop regarding the budget. So far this year, there was already a workshop on January. If you're just joining us for the first time today, there was a workshop on January 23rd where the survey results were presented, and an overview of the performance measurement framework was presented as well. And then last month, on February 27th, the financial plan for the general fund was presented. And you can find all of those materials and also the presentation. Those are all available online. And then a few weeks ago, I guess one week ago, on March 19th, quarter for financial report for the, for 2023 was presented. So, these are all, if you're joining us for the first time, these are all some elements of the budget process that, that we've already been through. So, just jumping into the next topics today. That's okay. So, the outline for today is to talk about budget resident engagement. We've had some exciting things happen in January and February and March, to connect the resident engagement schedule to the calendar for the budget process, and then to talk about the capital improvement program. So, there's a lot of different elements that go into a proposed budget. We talked a lot last month about financial forecasts. The community survey results have been addressed. And so this month, the focus in this presentation will be on resident engagement. Just as a reminder, we're continually updating the financial plan for the budget. Things like the labor market, overall economic conditions, both regionally and on a larger scale, impact the budget. And then also, we keep apprised of policy changes. So, those could be things that happen at a city council meeting on a given Tuesday, or those could be maybe at the state or federal level. And then every month that we have more experience, that helps us solidify our forecasts. Just a reminder from last time, the 2024 budget is expected to be balanced. That's because there's some strong cyclical revenues that are offsetting increased public safety costs. In the out years of the budget, we're expecting that revenue growth will begin to slow in the large revenue type, the large, the large revenues that comprise a revenue portfolio. So, those would be local sales tax, franchise fees and property tax. We're expecting slower growth there. We're also expecting a decrease in interest earnings. And we're still expecting, as always, to have continued wage pressure in the general fund. Just a reminder that 75% of the budget in the general fund is for those top priority services, and a lot of it is for wages, salaries and benefits for employees. So, we're very much in the service business in the general fund. So, wage, wage changes make a big difference to that budget. This is a repeat from last time. So, the goal here is to be able to, in the right side of the slide, to no longer have the widening deficits, but to be able to get those two lines back together to be structurally balanced. So, the good news is that in the left side, the left side of this visual, we were able to transfer funds to the stabilization reserve. And this slide was also presented at the quarterly report presentation. So, we were able to transfer funds to the stabilization reserve when we had those cyclical surpluses. However, there's not enough funding in the stabilization reserve for, to, on an ongoing basis. There's really, the funding could be available to invest in innovations, to help us be more sustainable in the future, but it's not an ongoing source of general fund support unless your time horizon is incredibly short. So, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work in the long term. So, that's just to catch you up on the budget process or the budget financial plan. So, just back to a reiteration on the community survey results. These were presented for the first time in January. The discussion then was to focus on services rated by residents as being a higher priority. And we asked them what to rate things as being a high, what kind of a priority they were, would be in the next two years, which aligns nicely to the budget process. So, there's been more of a focus on incorporating survey results into the budget process, and it's been much more intentional than it's ever been. And so at earlier workshops, the consensus was to continue to provide highly-rated services in the upper right or orange quadrant, but then to focus our attention, focus attention and potentially resources, I suppose, on the lower right quadrant, which that's the magenta one, where services are rated as a high priority for residents but are of lower quality. So, just a reminder, crime prevention is 95% of the survey respondents rated that as being a high priority in the next two years, which is pretty overwhelming. And then street repair, I think, is around maybe 88 or 89% high priority. So, this is the quadrant. It's the same thing that's on the poster. And then, just a reminder to see up close, these are the ones in the orange that are higher, higher quality but also higher importance to residents. But then the focus this year, it would be on the magenta quadrant, which those are things that are lower quality ratings, better of higher importance in the next two years. So, a little bit about resident engagement and what the requirements are for that and how we've handled resident engagement in the past. It has changed over time, but by state statute, we are only required to hold two public hearings and make a formal notification. We've added three additional budget hearings from the time that the budget is presented to adoption, and one of those public hearings is in the evening. We've, on a longstanding, it's been a longstanding history of presenting at district advisory boards and other community groups. Maybe 12 or 13 years ago, we added online engagement to reach more residents. And then the budget simulator was added in 2019. And that can be used online as an individual, but we've also taken that to community meetings, and people have done the simulator together. And then on top of all of that, the annual survey, which we've been doing since 2006, provides year-to-year comparisons. So, that's some background. So, in January 25th, after the last, we had two meetings that were followed up on workshops, and those were both at the Advanced Learning Library. We invited participants who were mostly graduates of the Civic Engagement Academy and also a lot of members of boards and other committees and commissions to join us. It was, I highly recommend the Civic Engagement Academy graduates to anybody looking to engage in resident, to do resident engagement. They're a wonderful group of individuals and very knowledgeable about the city of Wichita, our budget and the services we provide. It was a really wonderful experience. At the first meeting, the discussion was on the lower-quality, higher-importance services. And then at the second meeting, we broke up into two groups, and we discussed how to use some of the tools that we've used for budget and online engagement in the past to connect those to the magenta quadrant in the survey, to get meaningful feedback this year that will guide the budget process. Just a little bit about the social media town hall. I said 13 years. It was really 2012. It's been a long time. So, our first social media town hall is in 2012. We started on Facebook. We added Nextdoor and Twitter, now called X. And the magic of the social media town hall is that we catch people on platforms that they already regularly use throughout the day. There used to be a lot higher engagement through the social media town hall than there has been recently. In 2022, though, we say hires, all comparable, we had 65,000 impressions in 2022, 3,400 engagements, and then, which would be like likes or dislikes, and then 500 comments. So, still a considerable amount of feedback when you would compare that to maybe a line of people at a city council meeting. So, that's the social media town hall. And these are just examples of topics that I've, just to show you topics that we've had in the past, because they align somewhat to the magenta. One of these was about replacing or maintenance or expanding the street network or maintaining it. And then the one on the right was about SROs in schools. So, they would have a video and we'd ask people what they think. That's how those usually worked. The budget simulator was first used in 2019, and we last used that tool in 2022. So, when you set up the budget simulator, you can start with a balanced or an unbalanced budget. What we found and what other people's research has borne out is that you have a lot higher participation when the budget is not balanced to start with, because there's more of a call, more of a call to action than with a balanced budget. Services are grouped by categories. In 2020, we launched the budget simulator in June. People are really interested in local government in 2020 for a variety of reasons, and an online simulator was a great way to, something to do. Well, it's just so funny to think back four years. And we had 3,100 budgets completed over three weeks. I wouldn't expect that kind of participation in the future, but that was 2020. It's easy to use. No login is required, and it's really easy to use on a mobile device, because you just move different services. There's a slider. You move them right or left. So, that's some background on what we've done for social media in the past, or budget engagement in the past. You'll notice that in 2023, we kept a more traditional budget engagement approach, just, and I think a lot of that was because of the ARPA funding that was available during, for the budget, especially on the CIP side. And so now that we are pivoting to a different time, the ARPA funding will be unavailable starting in 2025. Things are a little, getting a little more stable when it comes to economic outlook, and it's time to check in on priorities. We have proposed a new or an updated approach to resident engagement during the budget process. So, the first idea would be to have a social media town hall that would be focused on the lower-quality, higher-importance quadrant. So, that's the magenta rectangle. That there would be two social media town hall events. So, one would be focused on crime prevention, and one would be focused on streets. So, in the past, we would have one or two social media town hall events, and they would be about a variety of topics. But this would be that there would be a theme for each of the events, and then there would be topics during that day. And then we would have stakeholders and partners in each of those topic areas. Be, one of the magic parts of the social media town hall has always been that we've matched up subject matter experts, to staff from the Budget Office and the communications team to respond to the topics. So, we would have those people available that day. So, it'd be kind of a hybrid event. So, there would be an online component and then a lot of people in person responding to topics. So, that's the idea for that. And then, this is also a departure from how we've used the online budget simulator in the past. But it would be, in the past, we grouped topics by what type of service they were. So, we had public safety together, and then maybe parks and libraries together. What we would proposing here is that we would group services together by what quadrant they were in. So, the lower-quality, high-importance would be grouped together and so forth. And so, increase-decrease options would be based on the quadrants. So, there could be some services where decrease or keep the same would be the only option. And then there, in other quadrants, increase or decrease could be options that would be available. And so, the idea is to have the social media town hall first, so that we could include concepts from that event into the online budget simulator. And the feedback we got from the roundtable participants, who really are a special group of people, because they participated in the simulator in the past, was that it's helpful when services that are compared are about the same size, because it can be really hard to use the simulator when police patrol services and fire emergency response in particular are so large compared to other services. So, that was a challenge that they presented, and so it was something we're going to work on. So, this is the budget calendar. So, the concept is that the social media town hall events would be held in April, and that the online budget simulator would be stood up in May. And hopefully, if everything goes to plan, that would be available for May DAB meetings. So, it's a lot. But, that's the idea. And so, then there would be a workshop again in April, so the social media town hall results could be shared then. And then at May, at the end of May, the simulator results. And then we move into finishing up the budget once they receive the AV notice in June. And then these are the rest of our meetings.
Before we go on to the capital improvement discussion, any comments or thoughts regarding the engagement?
In the past, regarding social media town hall, would this be just virtual and no opportunity for people who wanted to opportunity for people who wanted to come in person and ask?
Oh, I think they could come in person if they'd like to. Yeah, the participants in the budget roundtables were really excited about that opportunity. They were also excited about taking the Budget Simulator out to groups that they participate in. They're just a wonderful bunch, so.
I had two things, Madam Mayor, if I may. One, we are, I think we're trying to do some public engagement around public safety anyways as far as possible town halls or breakfast or whatnot. Is there room to kind of tie the two together? I mean, I don't want to go into streets when we're talking public safety, but would that be another opportunity to engage people on the budget during the public safety town halls?
Yeah, I'd like to keep the social media event, because we have people that will interact with us that way that won't attend a forum or a public, you know, public meeting. But we could see if that, if we could help the discussion and help frame the discussion at the town hall meetings, using maybe some, you know, what's in that tool or what we learn from social media may help shape the town hall meetings as well. But yes, we can link the two together. I just want to make sure we don't lose the integrity of the social media.
No, no, I agree. I definitely want, this was just an opportunity for more engagement on the issue. And the second one is, before I was in office, I did play around with the Budget Simulator. Just a warning to the public, it's a lot more difficult when you're sitting in this position than sitting at home on the computer to make these decisions. So, I just wanted to offer that as well.
And it's still hard.
It is.
It's hard. And I actually, behind the scenes, I don't make people balance to zero. I give them a little grace, so. All right, are you ready for the CIP?
I just have one quick little question.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, that's fine. On the Budget Simulator, last year, there wasn't a lot of room to kind of play with, like, as far as the dollars? I don't know, maybe it was like two or five million dollars. Is there, I mean, in some aspects, that's not really that much money in our budget to kind of play with, is?
Yeah.
Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm explaining it right.
Yeah, what she's explaining, for those of you who haven't been exposed to it, everything starts at zero, and then, we can set up in there, do we want to do plus or minus five, plus or minus ten, plus or minus one, plus or minus two? And so, because...
You mean millions?
Percent, sorry.
Percent, okay, gotcha.
And so, we've usually had pretty small amounts of change in the simulator, simply because I know that it seems like we're facing, like, the deficits are large as a dollar amount, but usually, we're not looking at things that are that dramatic. But then, what comes back is people like, well, I would have loved to have cut this by fifty percent. It's like, but we didn't need to cut it by fifty percent. So, it is, developing the options is hard, and so, that's good feedback to have. And I think that we have maybe two increments or four increments each way, so, but that's really good feedback.
Yeah, and I can't give you, like, the specific situation, but I just remember last year, people that were kind of playing around with it, were like, well, you know, you can only move like two million dollars or something, or whatever it was, but it just didn't, in the grand scheme of things, didn't really seem like you were really moving the market, which maybe is good, maybe is bad if you're trying to kind of shift some money around, so, anyway, for what it's worth.
Yeah, now that you mention it, I remember being at DAB six and getting all this feedback, and it was two years ago, because we didn't do the simulator and yet, we still remember. So, yeah, it was good feedback, so, no, we'll, it's great to hear people using it and providing feedback, and so, we thought we were being nice by being more incremental, and people were like, no, we want to be big, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
You what? Okay, CIP, ready? Okay.
Are you ever ready for the CIP?
I feel like you guys are pretty warmed up for the CIP today. Okay, so, what is the CIP? For the City of Wichita, the CIP is a ten-year plan for capital assets. The CIP includes financing elements, so it includes the expenditures for projects and includes the debt service, existing and future debt service, and then, also revenue projections. The projects are grouped by categories, so there's categories for water, bridges, parks, et cetera, and then, the financing sources are also identified, so ideas, financing sources would be things like local sales tax, debt service fund revenue, and what have you. So, develop, when we developed the CIP, it's driven by the City of Wichita mission and goals and by the Community Investments Plan. The Community Investments Plan is the comp plan or comprehensive plan for Wichita and Sedgwick County, and that was endorsed by the City of Wichita in late 2015. The CIP is also guided by needs assessments, master plans, strategic plans, and prioritization criteria that we have for all the projects that we intake. And the CIP, of course, is structured to be financially viable over the planning period. The expenditure overview, this pie chart connects to all the different project groupings in the CIP, so what you'll notice is that two-thirds of the CIP is for utilities, freeways, and special assessment projects. So, today, you spent a considerable amount of time talking about a park project, which is a surprisingly small slice of the CIP, but part of the CIP that we talk about the most because it's funded by property tax. And then, on the funding source of the CIP, if you flip back and forth, you'll notice that water and sewer match exactly, because water funds water a hundred percent, and sewer likewise. But on some other things, for example, on freeways, freeways have a variety of funding sources and so forth. So, geo-at-large revenue and local sales tax are about one quarter of the CIP. But when we talk about the CIP and all of the trade-offs and all the decision-making in the CIP, those are the two categories that we talk about the most. And if you're interested more in the funding side, there are a bunch of ten-year financial plans in the CIP for the funding sources. So, the CIP is aligned with policy parameters for the City of Wichita. The debt service fund mill levy is consistent at seven mills throughout the planning period in the CIP, and then, the water and sewer rates are consistent with modeling and that cost of service analysis that's done by the Public Works and Utilities Department. Geo-at-large debt service, so that's general obligation, at-large debt service is funded by property taxes to the debt service fund, is consistent with our guidelines, and then, our fund balances are maintained at appropriate levels. So, as I alluded to, there's two main focus areas when we talk about CIP development. That is general obligation, and it funds mostly parks. Well, I think parks are entirely geo, with the exception of golf improvements. Public safety, heavy equipment, and public facilities maintenance and improvement, so all of those are competing for the same revenue. And then, local sales tax funds freeways, bridges, and streets. This is a really, when I talk about policy parameters, this is a very important slide. This is, reflects the current adopted CIP, so the twenty-four to thirty-three CIP. The idea is to have the stack bar chart be below the yellow line, which is the revenue projection. We call this the debt service fund. A lot of the debt is short-term and some, a lot of it's, and then, about half of it's long-term. So, ideally, it would be a fifty-fifty mix between existing debt service and then, also pay-as-you-go, which is the red one. And of course, a different wrinkle that we've had for the last few years, which has been great, but that's been the ARPA funding, and a lot of that's been directed to the CIP for projects that would be funded by the debt service fund, so that's made the feeling of ongoing or new projects and projects under construction feel a little bit different than it will be in the future. So, when it's time to develop the CIP, this is kind of the order of operations for putting it together. So, the first thing we look at is our existing debt service, we look at that for all of our different funds. We look at our projects in progress, so those are projects, you can, there's a tab in the CIP called Ongoing Projects, and we look at how much has been financed permanently and what's left to be financed, projects that are under design, projects that were in last year's CIP, and then, finally, it's time to look at new projects. So, if you were to look at, compare your prior commitments to new projects, and this is not to say that we could do the entire CIP and new projects, this is just to say, if we were to look at the CIP and take out everything that hasn't been initiated or doesn't need funded or isn't in progress, but just our current commitments, this space out on the right side would be our new project capacity. However, I can tell you from the slide that was a couple before, on slide thirty, that we've already filled it all. This current CIP has already filled up that space, right? But those projects haven't been initiated yet, they're in out years. The other thing this slide tells you that there seems to be a lot of interest in new items in the near term, and I think that we've been able to do that in some cases because of the ARPA funding, but this CIP doesn't have hardly any capacity in the near term unless the yellow line were really different, but otherwise, there's just not a tremendous amount, there's hardly, not a lot of capacity here in the near term. So, if you're talking about new projects or reaffirming the projects that were already in the CIP, it's really looking into the future, so. As I read, and Dante and I were talking, as I read somewhere, it's, this is normal budgeting, but it feels like after ARPA, the ARPA period, it feels like austerity. So, this is, this is just normal budgeting, but it's kind of, I feel like a mood killer. But, on to the next slide. So, the Community Investments Plan, as I said, that's our comp plan for Wichita and Sedgwick County. They did a lot of looking at infrastructure priorities as part of that comp plan. Their first priority in that is to maintain and replace what we currently have, and we go through, actually, the Planning Department to make sure that we're in conformance with the comp plan, they review the CIP. Over half of our CIP aligns with that first priority. About a fifth of it is enhancements to current infrastructure, and then, a little of a quarter is to expand what we currently have. So, that's what's currently in the CIP. So, when we connect the, it's important to connect the operating budget in the CIP, and I don't, I think we've done that better than ever in maybe the last decade or so. They obviously have a connection from a financing standpoint, because the mill levy is split between the debt service fund and the general fund, and you'll notice that I said that we have seven mills modeled for the remainder of the planning period, but it didn't used to always, it used to be a different mill levy for the debt service fund in the past, so because of that shifting, we've had to integrate those two things together. But also, they're integrated because a lot of times, there's operating costs, particularly for projects that are expansions or enhancements, and it's important for the operating budget to reflect those. And then, also, from a standpoint of strategic alignment, both the CIP and the operating budget should align with the community survey, and they should both be financially sustainable. And I think when we talk about the CIP, when we talk about financial sustainability, we focus a lot on the ten-year, what we call pro formas, for each of the funding sources, but it's also really important to look at financial sustainability related to the CIP as its impact on the operating budget. So, when you prioritize maintenance projects that are just truly maintenance, you're repaving something or replacing an HVAC system, your costs may go, will be the same or they may go down, but when you're looking at enhancement and expansion projects, there could be an impact on the operating budget that in turn makes that financially unsustainable, even though maybe your debt service costs over on the CIP side are okay. So, just some examples of all the maintenance projects that are in the CIP, these are in the CIP every year, so these are ten-year amounts. So, for bridge rehab and repairs, a million dollars a year, so ten over ten years. And then, street maintenance is the largest one at a hundred and forty-five million. For all of these different asset types, the Public Works and Utilities Department has a decision support tool. The objective of the decision support tool is to keep the asset score for each asset in our inventory the same. So, when they're doing maintenance, they're truly doing maintenance, they're not enhancing it, they're doing maintenance and keeping it the same.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is the dirt road paving money, is that come out of this street pavement maintenance, or is that separate?
It's a separate line item, I think, in the CIP, and it's not maintenance, it would be an enhancement, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not, it's not an, I think it would be considered an enhancement. So, a little bit about enhancement and expansion projects. So, in maybe the past five to ten years, some of them were included in the CIP because there were some plans for each asset type, some examples of plans that led to projects being included in the CIP were, you know, the branch library system plan, for example, and there's a bunch of, there have been branch library enhancements, and now, that, those are ongoing. And then, some enhancement expansion projects are included due to capacity considerations or asset scores. So, for example, the fire station replacements, those are in the CIP due to the asset scores, and the police station replacements are in the CIP due just to the capacity at the fire stations relative to staffing levels, and that really came to a head during COVID, and then, arterial street improvements, capacity is something that they look at when they include those in the CIP. So, back to the Magenta, I almost considered wearing this color today, but I didn't, I held back, but back to the Magenta Square. So, again, you know, when, when people look at the CIP or look at just the City of Wichita, and they, and they call and email you, they probably aren't thinking, this is a capital improvement versus a maintenance thing, and we ran into that. An interesting focus group for street maintenance is people who are delivery and Uber drivers, and they have a lot of feedback about lots of different streets, and so, there was someone talking about streets, and this street needs maintained, and this street maintained, and actually, it's actually, it's in the CIP for enhancements. So, a lot of times, that gets lost, particularly for street repair, is it a CIP or is it operating budget? So, that, again, goes back to the whole concept of integration. So, when we're working on the next CIP, which will go all the way to 2034, the community survey could be used to prioritize projects in the CIP. So, as I said, we've used local sales tax for roads, bridges, and highways, but there, if there was a priority to maybe change how maintenance funding for streets is allocated or increase or decrease those types of things, that could be something that would be the kind of feedback that would guide CIP development. And going back to the graph that has the space in the out years for those projects that aren't in progress, aren't, you know, moving along in the, in the process, yes, those could be reviewed in future years, and that's also where one would consider putting in new, new projects. And then, another concept would be to consider doing planning efforts more broadly. I think that when, looking back at the slide about enhancements, I think there's been planning efforts about specific things, and I don't know that it connects really broadly to the entire CIP. Whoops, sorry. So, that's probably something that could be improved upon. So, that's, you know, what's next for the CIP, is putting it all together.
Yeah, Elizabeth, if you could keep that slide on. So, what we're looking for today is maybe some direction or agreement on a direction that we're contemplating for the CIP. Using the quadrants, what you could expect is to see more money for street maintenance than what we have traditionally put in or projected to put in. We've been looking at that for, and the feedback we got initially on drilling down in the survey was it was residential streets that people were most concerned with, so we will put more money into residential, not take away from what we're currently doing on arterials and other streets, but add, which means that we'll have to subtract someplace else. In terms of crime prevention, you'll, in the CIP, you'd be funding things like the Real-Time Crime Center and other facilities, possibly the substations, even though they're look, they look, we look at those as enhancements, they can help us in terms of our crime prevention initiatives. On the operating budget, we're going to try to bring to you a more comprehensive approach, and it may have some capital implications as well in terms of other services that have an impact on crime prevention. We know that there are certain things that we do in housing, in park and recreation, and in library services. in library services that can have a long-term impact on crime rates. And so we're, as a staff, working through that strategic approach right now, and it may impact our recommendation to CIP as well. And then what we'd like to do is kind of go through the enhancement and expansion projects with you to try to get your thoughts. If, if this council's issue is maintain first what we have, right, and maintain, and that's to get us to a certain high quality, I believe, in terms of the existing infrastructure we have. If that's the case, then it will need your guidance on what that means to some enhancement projects that are already in the CIP or are contemplated to be added to the CIP. So if you're okay with that framework, that's, at least from your initial discussions, that's where I think we would be headed, and you could expect to see documents from us in that regard. At maybe even the next workshop, we could start talking about some of that as we are trying to put together the draft CIP and operating budget.
So when you're talking about increasing areas such as public safety, the Real-Time Crime Center, and residential streets, are you talking about bending the curve on what we're spending on other CIP projects? Or are you talking about literally going in and taking what we have allotted for those and putting it towards the other two?
Probably going to be a little bit of both, mostly on the latter. It's going to be, as Elizabeth has shown, we don't have a lot of capacity in this 10-year program that was adopted last year, which means that some projects are going to have to probably be shifted out beyond 10 years if they're in the enhancement category. But that, you're going to have to make that decision. What I, the only caution I have is not to get above the line because it's watched so closely by the rating agencies, right?
Can we have some, like, some examples? I mean, because some of us that have been on the council have been working on some projects for a couple of years and have got extensive community feedback and, you know, asked for our districts and things like that. I'm all for maintenance and all of that, but I don't just want to, like, shift gears completely to, like, stop anything that could potentially be new for our district that we've been working on, to just shift over here to completely change the way that we've been doing things. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, and that's difficult because I wiped everything in District 6 out. What, I think what we would do, and again, we haven't strategized enough about this yet, but I think what we would probably do is first identify those that are in very early stages or haven't even been discussed, but there's a placeholder for them in the CIP, right? So we'd bring those first to you. And then there may be some tough discussions regarding projects that are at some phase of discussion in your district, and you need to collectively talk about, you know, how do you work through that? If there's any kind of framework we can think of, we will do that to provide some guidance so that you're uniform in what, in how you apply it. But, you know, if public safety continues to be a high priority, you've got, you know, in the enhancement category, you've got substation, new substations and enhancements to, and new fire stations, right? So those are all things that you'll have to talk about. There are probably going to be others that are maybe more quality-of-life amenities that we would have, you'll have to talk through those.
I think, much like Vice Mayor Ballard, I agree. Maintaining what we have is important, but the enhancement and expansion is too, and there are parts of our city that would love to see some enhancement and expansion that I think we should consider. Using one project that's in the works right now that I think is a great example is the Brewer Center. So we, we could maintain it as it was or enhance and expand it like we did, and there's just a whole lot of excitement about that, and many people who feel it's about time. And I think there's a lot of parts of Wichita that may feel like that. So as we're looking through CIP, I think it is good to have what that looks like just to maintain what we have, but the enhancement and expansion of projects that we've been working on, I think is key as well.
If we could use the Brewer Center and the Plainview Center as examples, we, I think we've got data that shows from, you know, nation, national data that shows that what you do for recreational opportunities, after-school programming, all of that has an impact, short-term and long-term, on crime prevention, right?
Absolutely.
So again, if you follow that framework, that will be part of a comprehensive strategy as we move forward to try to move the needle.
And I was going to bring up the example of Redbud, right? And having a trail that's better maintained and more utilized also is a crime prevention strategy, and that's something that I've been working on, Redbud expansion, not expansion, I'm sorry, enhancement for years, so we're thinking along the same lines.
And Mayor, I have a quick comment. I would be hard-pressed to support any new development outside of the Red Core, and I think, yeah, we can talk about crime prevention, we could probably say every single thing we do in some ways is crime prevention, and you could probably put a justification on that for every single thing. But I would lean far more towards taking care of our current facilities before building new facilities that haven't already projected and already moving forward unless it is on the right side and it can be directly associated with crime prevention, because you could say, most of the things in the blue category or the green category could be crime prevention. I'd say that new swimming pools are, I could say that, you know, golf courses are, I could say recreation facilities are, we could say that bus and transit services are, we could say great sidewalks are, but I think we have to be able to be very pinpointed on crime prevention first and making sure we don't have different maintenance and not just use that as a, everything's crime prevention. Though I do think there is some, I mean, there's truth to recreation facilities, but I think we have to have very clear connection to crime prevention for me to be able to support a lot of those projects.
Right, and again, if we're in that quadrant, and not to get into a debate today, but if you talk about bus or transit service, for instance, you're talking about economic development, which is also in that quadrant, right?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of the things on the right, I mean, even stormwater management, I think a lot of people probably consider that as part of street compare when you'd ask the general public. So I think those things are probably similar based on how the question was asked individuals.
I'd like to echo a message I mentioned last week or two weeks ago regarding the park study. So I feel like we have a lot of really great conversations even the last few hours regarding quality of life and how that is important, and that is a part of the mission of the City of Wichita. If you look at the mission statement for the City of Wichita, it's number three. And so I'd like to know where we're at on a park study, a comprehensive park study, to try to figure out, as I was just doing some quick researching while I was here, I mean, City of Wichita has 5,000 acres, 144 parks, according to our website. Des Moines, Iowa has 77 parks and 4,000 acres of land. Tulsa has 6,500 acres, 135 parks. We're a very spread-out community. That's what has happened with our community, and so we have started trying to make efforts to focus on the things that we believe need to be maintained because we've made investments. I think we have to, when we talk about possibly making tough decisions, if we can have more of a comprehensive idea of where do parks fit and why they are important. I do believe parks are important, and I want more people to utilize them. We just had our press conference on Thursday at Fairmount Park. But I also believe that we have a lot of them, and if we maintain them, are more focused maybe on some areas like McAdams Park. And just yesterday, we had over, I think, possibly 200 people attending the College Hill neighborhood conversation, and parks was brought up multiple times. And so I'm trying to be cognizant that that's what community is asking also as part of quality of life, but I feel like I don't have enough data to move forward with what should and should not be in our CIP.
We can give you a thumbnail sketch of where we are today. You're obviously not going to have a study done before you have to approve the CIP. I will caution you in terms of the numbers, how you use the numbers on parkland, because our model switched when East Side and West Side Development started to expand. There are a lot of green space opportunities and park opportunities that are provided in subdivisions by homeowners associations that aren't credited as public open space. And so in many communities, the park, that green space would be part of a public park system. And I happen to know in the Des Moines area that if people would actually dedicate, you know, some of their land in the subdivisions, the developer maybe would develop the land and then turn it over to the city and count as green space. And so we have a different model in that regard. And my biggest concern in all of this, and again, you have to give us direction, but what I'm concerned about is the quality of the parks that we, that exist today, right? What are we doing to enhance the playgrounds? What are we doing to maintain that green space and to make it really modern and usable and reflective of how people want to interact with us today or interact with parks today?
Unfortunately, we've spent a lot of money repairing things the last couple of years. Alien Park, you know, the day after the pool opened was like $40,000 or $50,000. I mean, we just have had so many, so much vandalism that if we did have plans for a park, they just keep getting pushed back because of vandalism. That's extensive and expensive.
And Pawnee Prairie Park is a perfect example of that. Every single week, the park gets vandalized in some capacity.
Yeah, but look at its success story, and that's Riverside. As time has gone on, we have continued to make improvements in Riverside that makes it relevant, and you can't go there on a Saturday and Sunday and not find it just really activated, so.
And Bob, just to maybe follow up with your conversation, your comments, which I really appreciated about modernizing parks, for example, I think probably the genesis of that was the Master Aquatics Plan, right? That kind of gave us a blueprint of how to proceed, and that's why I think when we have our, a park plan, and I mentioned a couple of weeks ago from the bench, that also making sure we include how the rec centers are dealt with, not only maintained, enhanced, in some cases, maybe even expand, just to make sure that that's included. Because we have really good examples of where we've used plans to make sure that we are heading in the right direction.
What I really enjoyed about this conversation is you're moving in a strategic direction, right? And that helps a lot as we start to put plans together.
Well, I definitely like the plan idea, and I think on community centers, I think we have some really good examples to start with engagement in other parts of the city with Evergreen, Brewer Center, and Plainview, and looking at other areas and kind of using that, and maybe even, you know, making it specific to the part of the community, so each one is unique.
I think I've got the feedback. Next, Elizabeth, Mark, anything else you think we need? Okay. Mayor, thank you. That's all we have for workshop today.
Thank you for all the presentations. Thank you, Elizabeth. Again, thank you for everyone who's still tuning in to the workshop. We are not adjourned yet because I have a request. I am moving that the City Council recess into executive session for 40 minutes to receive information on civil actions pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed pending litigation and legal advice, as well as protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
Second.
Okay. It is 12:00, almost 12:05. When shall, should we say 12:45? Okay, we will end executive session and return at 12:45 PM for the remainder of council chamber or workshop meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. We'll resume here in First floor Boardroom, that, just so we're clear.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
In the boardroom.
My mistake on your form. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
All council members who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 7-0.